April 17th, City Council Meeting. I'm City Council Vice President Jesse Adams. Council President Bill Dwight cannot be here tonight. This is the public comment period, which will start now. It's three minutes that every member of the public has to speak on any issue. We can't answer. Whatever you have to say is not interacted by our rules. And I'd ask you to keep it strictly to three minutes, please. First on the list is going to be Patty Shaughnessy and Crystal Cody.
Good evening. I'm Patty Shaughnessy, the Director at the Northampton Council on Aging and Senior Center. And this is Crystal Cody Stoes, our Assistant Director and also our Volunteer Coordinator. April has been designated as National Volunteer Month. It is about inspiring, connecting, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities. The many volunteers that we have working at the Northampton Senior Center assist us to meet our challenges and follow through with our mission of serving the seniors of our community. Our volunteers at the Northampton Senior Center fill many needed tasks, and without services for our volunteers, we would not be able to offer all that we do offer for opportunities at the Senior Center. Volunteers are the backbone of many organizations, and that includes the Senior Center. On Saturday, April 26th, we will be hosting a volunteer recognition breakfast as a thank you to all of our volunteers and all that they accomplish for us. Mayor Narckowitz will be joining us at the recognition breakfast, and he will be reading a proclamation from the city of Northampton.
The Northampton Senior Center is lucky enough to have over 130 volunteers that dedicate their time to the Senior Center. In Massachusetts, they have dedicated a dollar amount for a volunteer's time, and that dollar amount is $27.43. So that means that our 133 volunteers have helped give $330,000 to the city of Northampton by providing their volunteer services at the Senior Center. That's a total of 12,490.47 hours that they've given to the Senior Center in 2013. And they help out in everything, from being board members to bingo, brown bag, cleaning medical equipment, working in our coffee shop, being companions for homebound seniors that can't get out into the community, providing socialization, bringing them to the grocery store, and providing them with medical transportation to doctor's appointments. They really are, as Patty said, the backbone of our Senior Center, and we are very thankful for them.
And so, this being National Volunteer Month, though we appreciate volunteers all year long, when you come into the Senior Center, or you're at the hospital, or in the schools, or wherever you are, think of volunteer that you see who's there doing the job that they're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Lefkoe?
Claudia Lefkoe, 40 Valley Street. Perhaps some of you saw my letter to the editor in the Gazette today about the crosswalk issue. And I wrote that actually on April 1st, and it was a bit lost in cyberspace. And so, in the couple of weeks before they actually put it in the paper, two things happened to me. First, I was reminded by someone that after the Montview neighborhood approached the DPW about painting crosswalks, the Center for the Arts and the Arts Night Out Coalition, which is all the arts organizations in town, approached the DPW to say they were interested in painting crosswalks in the city. And they made a very specific proposal, and they tied it into like, basically rather than traffic calming, they tied it into city beautification, a way to bring more people out into the city and so forth. And they had money to do this, just like we had money to do this. And again, the DPW said no. So then, when I read in the newspaper that somehow the DPW had okayed a project and a crosswalk on Main Street, I was annoyed because I thought, well, how come they're painting and the crosswalk right on Main Street? And these other two proposals were dismissed. So the second thing that happened to me was that Penny Burke, the Director of the Center for the Arts, reminded me, and Jesse, this will seem familiar to you, that there's a city ordinance about public art. And in the ordinance, which I have in front of me, it says that, it talks about what is public art, and it says, "Anything except on school property is considered public art by the Arts Council, and is reasonably expected to stay no longer than 90 days shall be installed, shall not be installed without a permit from the Arts Council." So we called the Arts Council, and apparently they have not heard anything from the person or the group that proposed painting the rainbow on Main Street. So I'm here to say that somehow this seems very bad, that there's not a process. Like, we have an ordinance that says they have to go through the Arts Council for the permit, but some people can go to the DPW and get permission to paint. It is a public art project. It might be traffic calming, but it is public art. And I think there has to be some sort of way to determine what is it and where will it go. And I'm not exactly comfortable to have the DPW be, with all due respect, be the arbiter of public art. I mean, public art projects in this community generate a lot of interest, and I think I'm suggesting you put a stop actually on the sidewalk, on the crosswalk on Main Street, and perhaps refer it to what used to be the Art Subcommittee of the City Council, that then became Art and Recreation, and now I think has like many, many other duties. But I think this needs a process, and I'm here to urge you to like, put a little stop on this for now, and see if you can't make a process, and then let everybody enter fairly into this discussion and be of help to you about how we might proceed with public art in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasper LaPientzky?
So, I'm also speaking about the Rainbow Crosswalk. And what I wanted to speak about was actually, I wanted to respond to something that someone said two weeks ago. There was a public comment that was somewhat different in style, I think, than most of the ones that we're used to. And it said, to an effect, I can't remember exactly what it was, but to an effect, it said that the Rainbow Crosswalk is ideological and political, and that should be considered. We're used to taking offense at anything that doesn't fall into a certain category, and the tone was a little bit harsh. But the request was, consider whether, not simply whether they should be allowed to do it, but whether they ought to do it. And whether Northampton is represented by the rainbow. Despite the tone, I decided to think about it, as requested, and I think the answer is yes. I think Northampton is represented by the rainbow. I think we are, whether we like it or not, by the way. There's rainbows everywhere in Northampton. If you don't like the rainbow in the crosswalk, fine, but are you going to go around town eradicating rainbows? Are you going to take away the Italian flags that have all six colors and say peace in Italian from the peace activists? Technically, they're doing that on public property. It's about as noticeable. There are probably a thousand other examples of rainbows in Northampton. I happen to think that painting a rainbow crosswalk for gay pride is a really stupid idea. But it's not ideologically wrong, and it's happy and colorful and inclusive, and I don't think that... I think the answer to the ideological question is yes. And so, if you do decide to consider it in the ideological way, you should consider that it's a good thing to have positive symbols of cultural inclusion in the city.
Thank you. Kirk Sanger?
Hi there. I'm Kirk Sanger. I'm a father of three children that go to Bridge Street School, and we've been parents there for five years now. We just wanted to remind you how important it is to have a brand-new playground. The school is fantastic inside. Teachers are fantastic. The learning that takes place is fantastic. It's the only school downtown that's a public school, and it should sort of, basically, I think, be sort of the pinnacle of what a school looks like, both inside and out. And obviously, running around is obviously very important for kids to be able to move their bodies and breathe fresh air during the day, and not be breathing in sort of parts-per-million dirt. So we just wanted to basically remind you how important that is. Did you want to say anything, Finn? Yeah? No? No, it's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? And we'll go into the regular meeting. And we'll begin with the appointment of Pamela Powers to be the new Clerk of the City Council. I'd request a motion for the appointment to that effect.
Move to second.
Made in second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now move to the swearing-in of the new Council Clerk.
I bow to me, I Pamela L. Powers.
I Pamela L. Powers.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
Faithfully and impartially.
To faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As Clerk of the City Council.
As Clerk of the City Council.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the city of Northampton.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the city of Northampton.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the city of Northampton.
And the ordinances of the city of Northampton.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, Pamela.
Clerk will call the roll, please.
My first official duty here. Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
Counselor Specter?
Here.
There are no presentations. There are no public hearings. We do have a communication from the mayor. This communication is in recognition of Arbor Day, which will be April 25th, 2014, from the city of Northampton. Whereas in 1872, a special day was set aside for the planting of trees in Nebraska, which then was a treeless plain. Today, millions of communities celebrate Arbor Day all over the world. In Massachusetts, we celebrate Arbor Day in our state tree, the elm, on the Fourth Friday in April. And whereas trees provide endless benefits, including shade, recreation, food, and building products, wildlife habitat, oxygen production, and carbon dioxide uptake; and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and wherever they are planted become a source of joy and serenity; and whereas rain nourishes the landscape. But as buildings, roads, and parking lots spread and natural tree cover is lost, so is the absorbing effect of vegetation and soil. Rain becomes costly stormwater runoff. Without the benefit of trees and vegetation, waterways are polluted by oils, heavy metal particles, and other harmful substances washing away fish... washing away. Fish and wildlife suffer. Drinking water becomes impossible to reclaim. Property values are reduced, and our living environment is degraded. Now therefore, I, Mayor David J. Narckowitz, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014, as Arbor Day in the city of Northampton. I urge all citizens to celebrate the day's purpose, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant new trees for the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and affixed the seal of the city of Northampton, David J. Narckowitz, Mayor. Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation? No? There are no licenses and petitions. We'll move to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Minutes of April 3rd.
Moving to second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We'll move to reports of committees. Oh, we skipped... I'm sorry, we skipped... Are there any one-minute announcements of events? Counselor O'Donnell?
On Tuesday, April 29th, at 7:00, there'll be a forum to discuss the future of Pleasant Street. It's a forum called Pleasant Futures, and it will be held... I wanted to call it Pleasant Dreams, but that was too sleepy, I guess. It'll be held at 118 Conne Street, again, at 7:00 PM, April 29th.
The address again, I'm sorry.
118 Conne Street. And it will involve the Department of Planning, and the War III Neighborhood Association, and local business owners and residents. Everyone's welcome to come share their thoughts.
Are there any others? Thank you. We do have one appointment. New appointment to the planning board, Teresa Perron-Poe, term March 2014 through March 2019 to replace Jennifer Derringer, whose term expired in March 2014. Is there a motion to refer to the...
Move to refer to rules, orders, appointments, and ordinances.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We'll now recess for the Finance Committee.
Pam, would you call the roll for me?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
Excellent. The first agenda item tonight is a report from Scanlon Associates. Mr. Scanlon is here and completed the audit of 2013, and you'll approach and go through your presentation for us. Thank you.
Hope I only have three minutes, do I?
Oh, you don't.
So I've got a PowerPoint presentation for you. Figured I'd step it up a notch.
Want that light off over here? Would that help?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Should go off.
Thank you, Wayne.
There you go.
For those who don't know me, I'm Tom Scanlon Jr., Managing Partner of Scanlon Associates. And I brought Jeff Gendron with me tonight, who is the Audit Manager, in charge of the audit. So the two biggest lies in auditing are the client, it's great to see you, and the auditor, we're here to help. From our firm approach, we like to close that gap. So we feel the audit is a year-round process. It's not just a two, three-week thing, and we're out. We say, this is what you did wrong, and we're gone. So we like to close that gap. We are here to help, but we don't want to be relied upon either upon your controls. So I think that's something to point out. I'm putting Pam to the test here tonight, going backwards. I don't know why it's going to the first one.
That was great, thanks.
That was a good one. There we go. Perfect. I do something? So what's the point of an audit? It really just focuses on your financial statements. The objective of an audit is to opine on your financial statements. It's only a backhanded level of assurance on your internal controls, and I don't mean that literally, we don't backhand you. But we're expressing no opinion on your internal controls. It's really, we're designing our audit procedures by doing a risk assessment. It also keeps the management team motivated throughout the year. If you feel like your control doesn't work, hopefully management says, oh, we've got these auditors coming in, I better do this. And also satisfies bond disclosures out there, N133 requirements, which is single audit. And also ensures public and management confidence that your controls are working. My next slide. Can't be falling asleep up there. I would like to point out what the independent auditor's responsibility is. Their responsibility is plan, perform the audit, to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, whether caused from error or fraud. The sole objective is not to find fraud. And I know there's an expectation gap between the client and the auditor. Everyone associates the word with audit with fraud, and that's not the purpose. It's a risk-based approach. We assess risk on your financial statements, and a part of that risk is the fraud risk. And so, we're designing our procedures with that incorporated, and we're looking for material fraud. But that is not the sole objective of it. And I always like to point that out, because I know there's a big expectation gap between client and what the audit actually does. So with that kind of being said, we'll jump right in. You should have three reports in front of you, or on your computer with technology these days. First one, the thicker one, we're going to go through, and then we're going to go through the single audit, which is compliance requirements of federal funds, and then the one that everyone looks forward to is the management letter. So the basic financial statements, some of the general highlights that I'm going to point out. If there's any questions as we go, please stop and ask them to me. I just want to focus on key ones I think are important through. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion a municipality can get, in accordance with GAAP. And again, that was our sole objective, to do that, so the city should be congratulated on that. The first two statements, kind of on pages 12 and 13 of the report. These are what we call entity-wide statements. They focus more, kind of get in line with the private sector with a company. They have on there, it takes on the whole economic resource measurement focus, which is, takes into account your fixed assets, depreciation, your long-term debt, your OPEB liabilities, your compensated absences. So that, what these first two statements are looking at. Some of the general highlights on the pages 12 and 13, that kind of stand out at you. Next slide. You see your OPEB liability. It's at approximately 25, approaching 26 million. I know, we've talked about that liability in the past, and what OPEB stands for is Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is mainly your health insurance. It's just the promises you made to your employees that at a given point in time, you're going to pay them. Back in 2009, Gatsby required that to be on your financial statements, which the city did. You can see it's growing about 7.7 million a year. You're not alone in that. Every municipality across the country is facing that. You're on a pay-as-you-go basis. And one of the things we talked about was adopting a trust to fund it. As we speak, in 2013, the city does not have a trust that's funded. Somewhere near lies the truth. I know it's not $0, but I'm not too sure it's 25 million either. There's a lot of assumptions based into there. But again, I put OPEB in a category of, when it first came out, is who's doing it, who's measuring it, who's putting it on their financial statements? The city did. Now we're kind of in the area of, what are you doing about it? The city passed some laws, you know, addressed some, the plan design, and now I think the next step is how are you going to fund it? So I think that's one thing going forward, is come up with a plan, how to fund it. And again, if you look at your unrestricted governmental funds, it's a negative 15.5 million. You never want to see negatives on your statement of net position. The direct result of that is your OPEB liability and your compensated absences. You're on a pay-as-you-go, as you go on that. So there's no assets up above, where if you have debt, the corresponding asset is up above. So typically, most communities, I do, I do approximately about 80 municipalities, we specialize in them, they're all in the negative net position. So we have about five to six communities that are funding their OPEB to an amount that is realistic. They're not just sticking $10,000 into a trust, you know, they're attempting to fund 10% to 30% of their ARC. You know, the city would have to fit 7.7 million dollars into their budget, which I'm assuming that's not a possibility at this point in time. But again, it's just getting you thinking about that you are making promises out there. And that's what these first two statements kind of do. It's, over your time, when you're making promises, and you're not funding them, you're going to see the decrease on your net position. So on page 13, you'll see the net position decreased in the governmental activities, 2.5 million. And you'd expect to see a decrease, 7.7 million, because you're not funding it. However, this takes into account capital assets and depreciation. So you purchased $8 million that you expensed on your governmental, but over time, the 4.6 we're only hitting on this statement because it's factoring in depreciation. So those two net out to the bulk of 2.5 million. Most municipalities are going to see a decrease on this statement. That's why I don't want to get too excited, because of the OPEB and the compensated absences. So I think those are two kind of statements, just want to point out, because most people look at that and say, oh, geez, we're in a negative Y, and that is Y. The next statements kind of want to focus is on pages 14, and 15, and 18. And these are your statements where the bond companies are really focusing on, where management should focus on. It takes into account the current economic resources, which is your debt payments are in here, not depreciation. What you're collecting is recognized as revenue, as opposed to the first statement we're on, which you bill out as being recognized as revenue. So these are more traditional. You'll see on the statements on pages 14 and 15, they're broken out between major funds and non-major funds. There's certain criteria that meet into major funds. It's the general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, will always be a major fund, will be always in a separate column. And then you have the police construction facility, which is just, it didn't meet the criteria, but it piques public interest. That's why we showed it has a major fund. The non-major funds, for anyone that's interested, is broken down on pages 59 through 62, and what they compromise of is your grants, your revolving funds, your capital projects, and your trusts. I always encourage management to look at that, just to see what they have out there in those funds, just go through, maybe something might pique their interest. You'll see that the fund balances are broken down between non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. And back in 2011, Gatsby defined fund balance in different criteria, and that's a level of constraints. Restricted would mean anything outside granting agency gives you money, it would be restricted. National law, revolving funds, governed by a law outside of the city, so it would become under restricted. Assigned would be your encumbrances, which is at your department head level, you vote a budget, they didn't spend the money by the end of the year. They obligated it though with a purchase order, so that's the number would be under, assigned. And unassigned would be the net residual balance, not restricted to anything. What Gatsby 54 did was put your stabilization fund under your general fund. So that's one thing, when you look at unassigned, you see it at 5.6 million. The city's free cash is only 3.2. What that difference is, is your stabilization funds are now recognized under the general fund. So I think that's one thing I wanted to point out. And on page 15, you'll see that's your operating statement, and you'll see the general fund, I would like to point out, the 2.1 million increase by. That is a focus of bond companies. And I just like to point out that that change is, since stabilization fund is part of the general fund, every time there's a net increase in stabilization fund, your total fund balance is going to go up. You're able to generate an extra $400,000 in your free cash. And also, what plays a role in that is your difference in encumbrances. Your encumbrances from last year to this year, which is fund balance, increased $1 million. So, and it has to do with your capital. So you voted them in in 2013, but you didn't actually spend the money, so it's part of your fund balance. So going into next year, we'd expect to see a decrease. And with governments, unlike a business, decreases should get you excited, gets bonding commens... gets bonding companies excited. But the reason for them is it's one-time things. So even though you look at it, from a company perspective, you look at the private sector, say, oh, 2.1, we're doing really good. You are, but a component of that, roughly about a million dollars, has to do with encumbrances. So your actually total fund balance in theory went up about 1.1 million, which is the total increase in stabilization and to generate free cash. And then, go back one side, yeah, there you go. So your free cash was certified by, back two slides. Go backwards, yeah, there you go. So your free cash was certified at 3.2. I always like to go over where free cash comes from, because I think it's a component. The city council, you're voting on it and the use of it. And I always like to kind of go over that with management. And if you go to page 18, this is probably the key statement, any government is your budget versus actual. And we can kind of see how we laid out on the slide for you, that on your appropriations, you're turning back about 1.7 million. And that generates free cash. So you're establishing a budget. Departments are spending them or encumbering them at year's end, which if you go look at the statement, you'll see the final budget was 81 million. That includes prior year encumbrances. And then the third column is what actually happens, actually spent, actually received. And the fourth column is the encumbrances. So it's the piece that you're encumbering from one year to the next. And as we talked about, your encumbrance has increased. You can see if you just look at capital improvements for a minute, the original budget, that 1.3, that was what came forward from your 12 budget into your 13. And at year's end, you're encumbering 2.6. So if you're going to spend the 2.6 in 2014, we'd expect to see your fund balance decrease 2.6, because it's sitting in the beginning fund balance. I always think that's important to point out. When bonding companies or the management looks to see, oh, geez, we decreased, we must have did bad. And that's not always equated, like in a company. So when you look at your appropriations, 1.7 million, more than half is what's generating your free cash there. So you're getting your free cash off return of appropriations. When you look at, it shows good management oversight. It's part of management, they're watching their budgets, they're making sure departments just aren't spending their money because they have a surplus at year's end. So that's encouraging to see as the governing board, as you look at this statement. Because I have plenty of clients out there where it shows $100 left over at the end of the year. So again, your free cash is being generated off return of appropriations. And then if you go up to the top half, which is your state and local receipts, you're generating about 835,000, which is good, you're conservative on your receipts. And as we look at those individual categories, if you look at charges for services, that's ambulance and parking, when you look at the statement. And then license permits and fees, two big components of that is school tuition, Smithville tuition and parking tickets. So you have a nice blend on that statement of your revenues, you're very conservative. So when you're conservative on your revenues, when you set them to an appropriate level, and you set your budget off of that, any excess that comes in is free cash. So again, if you're going to increase your estimates on your local receipts, you're going to lose the free cash. So I think it's very, kind of where it's coming from. So I think we laid it out right there for you. Do you have any questions?
Well, I mean, so you talked about the variance for the unencumbered
Yep.
funds, and so for, I'm looking at the line for investment income, then it shows a $40,000 negative. Does that mean that we had a decrease in our investment?
Well, it just means what you budgeted. You budgeted 133,000 for your investment income. And you know, the markets haven't been the best in the world.
Right.
So that's very common, the last two years, seeing negatives in there. So, and again, you go into 2014, you're taking that into account, so you're reducing that. Okay, so when we look at local receipts, we kind of take anything under, intergovernmental, it's always a local receipt. So as long as you have, you don't have negatives in every category, but you have a nice blend, you don't have one-time things off of there that's generating it, which is good to see.
Would that be the same thing for the interest then, that it was against an estimate? And that's why it shows up in the negative?
Correct, yes. And then, on the next slide, we kind of put your last five years of free cash and stabilization funds there. Because these are your two main reserves. As you can see, your free cash has been going up. Back in 2012, approximately about 1.2, that 2.8 was one-time events. About 850,000 closing out of ambulance surplus, which is a one-time thing. And then you had a bond premium of about 375. So of the 2.8, 1.2 of that, again, a one-time event that happened. So, and we jump up to 3.2, we see the city starting to align their budget pretty accordingly. And I think you have a great plan put together in establishing reserves and establishing the budget. And you also have a plan on utilizing, establishing stabilization funds. When bond companies look at you out there, this is what they're looking at. So I think that chart jumped out at us while we were auditing. And I've talked to your management about it. So as an outside person coming in looking at your finances, I like what I see. Bond companies are too, so.
Just that one-time event that you're referring to is actually the override, the piece of the override that took a portion and put that into stabilization?
That's 2014, I believe that's kicking in.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not reflected?
That's not even reflected in these, so you're even going to see that even more. And again, all these things that you're doing, and this is this plan you have, bond companies are looking at you differently, in a good way. Reserves are great. And I know there's a fine blend between overtaxing and establishing reserves. I think you're right on target with what you're doing. You can see back in 2009, 2010, you don't want to be there. I mean, 2009 was a tough year, you could see. So if you do the next, things that are free cash, free cash, you know, is considered a non-reoccurring type available fund. So you want, when you use it, you want to use it for non-reoccurring events, or having a nice blend of it, which I think the city's getting on track to with their budgets. You should strive to generate 3% to 5% in your budget, that's a general recommendation. Your budget, the first goal, the first one you adopted at the beginning of the year, now without transfers at the end, is approximately about 75 million. That's really your operating budget. So 3% to 5%, we put you about 2.2 to 3.7, so you're right in that category. Then we kind of listed down your reserves to look at them, with the bond companies are looking at you. And your total reserves, and we threw a parking reserve in there, about 6.1. Sound, when you go out there and get a bond rating, they're looking at 10% as sound reserves. You're roughly about 8% of your total budget. So again, you're going in the right track. I like to keep on encouraging that. I know it's easy for me to say to build your reserves, but they do go a long way when it comes into emergencies. And also with bond, when you go out into the bond market, you're getting reflected in the bond rating. Some other key financial highlights I just like to point out is, you know, really your two key revenue sources are your property tax and state receipts. So anything you do that's significant in building reserve is going to come from the tax or a state receipts. So as state receipts go down, so might your budget too, or so might your reserves. And that's the importance of reserves. When your state has a bad year, you can fund it, back fund it with, you know, stabilizations that you build up.
Yes, on the property taxes?
Yep.
Because I know that for several years, we have had difficulties where some people could not pay their taxes. Do you have that total?
Uh, yeah, I'm actually going to get that to one of the slides.
Okay.
Because it's something you should be preparing, actually. And on the expenditures, I always think it's the categories. I see education, employees' benefits, that's 50% of your budget. Public safety up there too. The debt service, I always like to point out, usually debt service, we'd see 5% to 6% of your budget without debt exclusions. The city does have a debt exclusion, so we'd expect to see that in the 8% to 10% category. So you're right there with your debt. If you didn't have a debt exclusion, 8%. I'd probably encourage you to have one, actually. So everything's kind of falling in line, but I think it's always important to know when you look at your, when you're setting your budget, property taxes, 60%, intergovernmental, 20%. So those are your big chief resources. Next slide. Is on pages 63 and 65, we laid out in our report your key accounts receivable. And I think what you see is, you know, your property tax collection rate is 97%. And all that is, all we take that calculation is collections divided by the commitment just for the current year. 97% is really good. Usually, like, see, communities are usually at 92 to 95. And then they're throwing everything into tax title. The city here, their tax title is at 411,000. That's good. That's extremely low for a city your size. So what that's telling us is you're collecting your taxes. Some of the things we don't like to see is if you're down below 92, you're 89% and your tax title is not growing. And that is a key for us, that something's wrong, something's going on. And you don't have that. So I think that's what you were kind of referring to. And again, as you look, there's minimal to no variances between the detail and the general ledger.
And also the column on abatements and adjustments, is that comparatively low to others? Because it's 330,000 out of 45 million?
Yes, that's low compared to your commitment.
Yeah.
And that would stand out in your collection rate. You know, if you were billing in your commitment and you were misbilling, lack of a better term, you'd have to have abatements or your outstanding list would grow. So your collection rate would be dropping. So that's right on, I mean, it's above average when we're taking them. Usually seeing 92 to 95%. So you can tell, I know she's sitting behind me, you can tell your collector's doing her job. And you can also tell that the finance team's doing their job too, by balancing out the ledger. When you see minimal variances, that means your controls are working. You know, this is the detail, the actual detailed lists. And that's balancing out to the ledger, that's why you have segregation to do it. You have a city auditor who's maintaining the ledger, and then the collector who's collecting the asset. So you want to see them balancing out what you are. So I think that schedule is very important to point out. The only thing, and I am an auditor and I always see the pessimist on the side of it, is you do have older tax accounts receivable out there. Personal property and motor vehicle. You go back, aways, and they're problem accounts. Unfortunately, the other way, the personal property, you have to write off, you have to write off through your overlay. So again, we're encouraged, the city, to work on writing those off. My opinion, you're not going to collect them, just a matter of doing the formal process, going through. Again, a motor vehicle, living in a college community, someone registered a car here, they're outstanding. You do have a procedure where you mark them at the registry. But if, you know, they're out in East Utah, I don't think they're going to come back to Northampton to pay their 1988 motor vehicle bill. I mean, but you are marked at the registry, so if they ever do come back in Massachusetts, which I have seen, I've seen a $5 motor vehicle excise bill turn into $480. So you are marking, you are doing those procedures. But again, we just like to clean up the books, just to show it.
There was a line there on rollback taxes, it's very small, but is there, what is the rollback tax?
Rollback taxes, if you're in 61A, which is farmland, and you come out of it, you're, you have to, I don't know how the term rollback, I'm just assuming this is how it came about. It rolls back three years, you have to go back and pay that difference in tax between what you were in and what you were taxed at. Again, I think you have a balance coming in, I think it's just, you really, you're leaned at the registry. So you always have an automatic lean on that. So those are kind of the key, basic financial statements, I just want to hit with you. Again, after you have a chance to raise any more questions, take, call me, contact me. The next report is the single audit report. And I usually just like to touch base on that, what it is. Is if a municipality expends over 500,000 in federal funds, you have to do a thing called a single audit. It's compliance-driven, all in accordance with grants. The city expended 4.2 million in federal awards in fiscal year 13. And the rules are, we have to test at least 50% of those grant awards in accordance with the compliance supplement put out by the various granting agencies. So the grants we tested with education grants, they were special ed and Title I. They were approximately 927,000. And community development, 1.4 million. And we had no findings, which is always a good thing.
How do, maybe you say this, how do you determine which grants to test?
Uh, you have to cover the 50% rule. It was a matrix, what we do. I don't want to get too technical on you, but they're considered major programs. So anything over 300,000 is considered a major program. And you have to test their major program once out of the three years. So, once you define the major programs, then you have non-major programs. And then you assess risk on the major programs and non-major programs. And then you have to cover 50%. So you test the high-risk grants. So yeah, it's kind of a, if you saw the matrix, you'd probably get dizzy, I mean. Anything that federal government, kind of make it come down. But again, I think it's important to know that, you know, the federal grants are being tested coming through the system. And then the management letter, which I know everyone likes to talk about. I know it's usually a focus of everyone involved. Kind of, you know, put some viewpoints, what the auditor thinks, you know, why is the IRS so big? I'm going to get fired because I didn't cross my T here. And sometimes, you know, when we're out there doing the audit, we do make the client kind of feel like the guy on the left pulling his hair out. What we see with the management letter is, you know, adding value and accountability to the governing board, as we go through and look. That you want to make sure your controls are being, what your assertions are being made. We know, hey, we want our cash balance, we want our accounts receivable. That's what we're telling constituents out there. So that's what we have going through the management letter. I know, I know sometimes, it's always a, you never see anything good in a management letter? It's always criticisms, we'll say. So. Again, the management letter, there was no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies, which is good. We only had other matters, which we had four current comments. One of them is to adopt a reserve fund for compensated absences, which you did at the first part of this fiscal year in '14. Again, that's another reserve we talked about. The city's compensated about 3.5 million. That's good to see, we like that. Encourage, that's a good job for adopting that. Which more my clients would adopt that section of the law. Health insurance withholding, through our testing, tax withholdings changed where they had to report your health insurance on the W2s. That was a tricky administrative burden that happened in most communities, was how do I get the two pieces onto the W2 without going in and manually put them on? So a lot of accounts were created. And what happened is a lot of links where it was hitting payer withholdings twice. The first time we found it, it was the next 40 in a row. Anyone that had munis kind of had the same finding you see in the management report. Again, it was more reviewing it. Probably would like to see management catch that on their basis. But again, they, we went over it with them, they addressed it, and they rectified the situation. Third comment, we have is encumbrances, and we talked about that earlier. Encumbrances, trying to rush me. Encumbrances, and what encumbrances is, you vote a budget, at the end of the year, you have to have some kind of obligation in place, a PO, a contract, or some commitment to spending the money. During our testing, probably like to see the control picked up a little bit in that regards. And again, we've talked about it with your finance team. They understood, and they were going to put controls for this year in closing, to review the controls on the encumbrances on a little more tighter basis. Again, I think that's more being more picky than an actual problem. But again, I usually have the motto, I like to stay ahead of the barking dogs. So, then our fourth comment is Gatsby 65 and 68. Just when you thought there could be no more Gaspys, we've got another one coming down the line. The most important one there is Gatsby 68, and it has to do with pensions. As you all know, Detroit, I'm sure they still exist, but they went through financial difficulties. Came back to their pensions. And Massachusetts measures their pensions the same way as Michigan measured their pensions. So Gatsby 68 came out. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things to kind of sort out with this Gatsby. There's a lot of conflicting, how is it going to be measured? There's two years, 2015 financial statements board, we have to put it on. So we're encouraging the city, attend as much informational sessions you can get to. I believe the city should be all right in that regards, because of, in the way I read it, if your pension system is somewhere around 62% to 65% funded, you should have an asset on your books, which I believe Northampton retirement system is. So it's just a matter of getting the Gatsby, learning it, and how to implement it onto your financial statements. That's going to be the complexities for Northampton. Again, we don't want to see no delays in Again, we don't want to see no delays in issuing of your financial statements, because you do have a March thirty-first deadline to submit. And I see a mess coming up on the horizon with all this. And talking with your actuaries, really, in essence, you have to have two actuarial studies. One to come up with your ARC, which you're doing now to fund it, and then another one to come up with an amount to put on your financial statements. So they look at it, and one's prospectively, and one's retroactively. So, there's going to be a lot of complexities with that. So hopefully, a lot of it will be worked out over the time. So I figured, two years down the road gives enough time to work it out. Some of our prior year other matters, we talked about the older accounts receivable. But one area was bank account reconciliations. Last year, when we went and tested them, we saw some issues that should have cleared up that affected the ledger. Believe we approached that, but subsequent to our audit field work, subsequent to year-end, you had a change in personnel. That was key personnel, you are a small office in there. And the bank reconciliations got behind, and let me say, behind excess of thirty days. And that's such a key control to it. Again, we trusted with management, and management is on top of it, is addressing the situation. But we encourage, which I don't think will be an issue, I believe management is good in that regards. So, and that's one thing I would like to point out. In prior years, we had management comments to you about assessing your internal controls and monitoring your risk. You are doing that, you're one of the few communities that do that. You're very, you're proactive when you're looking for things. So I mean, that's one thing I like, that should be, congratulate your financial team, that you're definitely, you don't sit back and, okay, let's wait for something to happen. I think you're constantly researching, which is a tough job. I mean, you've got a seventy-five million dollar budget, you've got complexities all over the place. Municipal finances changed so much in the past ten years, I mean, I started twenty-two years ago. My audit program was four pages, now it's seventy-two pages. So, programs, so I think the city does an excellent job in assessing their risk and monitoring their controls. And I think that's just about it, and the big question mark comes up.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon?
I actually have a question, it's for the finance director, about number four in the management letter. And I was just curious, well, the recommendation is to centralize the process of review and compliance with various grants, bonds, and other sources of funding?
Oh, that's prior years? That was prior years, management point four?
Okay, so the city's response is to take it under advisement? And I'm curious as to what level of consideration we gave to that?
Right, we don't have any one department that's kind of responsible for reviewing all of the different grants that various departments get us involved with. Some of the more complex ones have been the QECB and the CREB funding that we did, that was part of the energy conservation. And there's some very specific requirements there that, and then, of course, there's CDBG, and then there's fire department grants. So, right now, we rely on the department manager to be the one that basically makes sure that we're complying with all of the requirements of that grant. It's something that we need to perhaps more centralize. We haven't gotten to that point, we haven't got another, one person assigned to this, because it's a pretty big job, because it's basically trying to figure out all of that fine print that's in every contract that we sign with a governmental agency. So, I can't say that we've made tremendous progress on this, but we know we need to. With CREBS and QECBs, I've gotten involved in that, just because we had certain funding deadlines that we had to have that money spent by. So we got more involved in looking at that one than some of the other ones. But we know we need to do a better job at this, we just haven't figured out how we'll do that. You know, we have all the school grants too, so it's kind of like, there's no one on the municipal side who's going to be able to kind of get into all the school grants. So we're just trying to sort that out right now.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions with regards to one of the first things you talked about, which was our accounting for funding our future healthcare liabilities. And I remember when that first came out, and then we were all gassed by that, and now we have pensions coming too. There was some talk about the state actually setting up a form of trust fund for municipalities so that we could pool our efforts to do that. Because every community in Massachusetts probably has that problem, and to come up with a joint solution where we could set up a trust for that and fund it, and it would cover us. Has the state made any progress like that?
I think the state, the state passed Chapter Three, it would be Section Twenty, which it localized it, which said each local community can adopt its own trust and keep the funds at their level. So that's why, that's the section of law I would encourage on adopting.
Very good. And the state had the same problem we did. Did they deal with it?
You know, I believe they are funding it. I would have to look at their funding, I believe, yeah. I mean, everyone has the same.
Everybody, every governmental entity has the same issue with this accounting.
And somewhere in their lives is the truth, it is a promise that you made. Yeah, everyone's in the same boat. I know, I know there's different, there's different theories on it. Connecticut, if I can get some information on, Connecticut, for any new hires, they're doing a surcharge onto the new hire, so I think it's three or five percent of their pay, which they're not tax on, it's deferred. They take and they put it into a trust, and I believe the state matches it. So, and then at the end of ten years, that salary comes, gets restored back to the employee. So any new hires, they're assessing right off the bat, I mean, that's one way to kind of fight it.
For those individuals?
Yeah.
But not for existing employees?
Not for existing. I guess the hope there is you'll, they exterminate.
Well, thank you, I'm very pleased, because I remember, you know, there were some pretty serious issues in the management letter we were getting five or six years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's cleaned up very nicely, I think, so.
Yes, you're definitely going in the right direction.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Scanlon? No? Thank you for.
Anytime.
Your report and the upgrade to PowerPoint.
Thanks, and if there's any questions throughout the year, don't hesitate to contact our office and any concerns. I'll bring all my mess with me.
All right, and now we have, we're done with our audit, we have some financial orders. The first one is to reprogram thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents from Jackson Street School's tile to library air conditioning. So I'll read the order. Whereas the City of Northampton appropriated seventy-five thousand dollars for the replacement of asbestos tile at Jackson Street School in two thousand and eleven, and whereas there is a balance of funds remaining from the project of thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. And it's the mayor's intention to reprogram this remaining balance for other capital needs. Whereas there is an identified need to provide air conditioning in library space. And whereas Jackson Street School is the only school building in the district without air conditioning or ceiling fans in the library to provide a cooling space, and funds would be used for equipment and labor that would be provided by central services, HVAC, and electrical staff. Now therefore, it be ordered that thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-one cents be reprogrammed from the balance of the Jackson Street School tile replacement project for the purpose of providing air conditioning in the library at Jackson Street School. Motion in finance?
I'll move to send this forward to the full city council with positive recommendation.
All right, any more discussion? I see Mr. Palmerance is here, do we want to speak to Mr. Palmerance about this?
Move to recognize Mr. Palmerance.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You're on, Mr. Palmerance.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy, good evening, councillors. Briefly, as the order is written, we have money left from an extensive flooring project we did at Jackson Street over the last two or three years. Principal Gwen Agnes has, for years, been trying to get air conditioning to the library and school. So on really hot days in the spring, once, and I'm sure it will happen this spring, once winter disappears, on extremely hot days, they can bring the children into the library as almost a cooling center. We have exactly the amount, right amount of money left over in the flooring account to move over and do this air conditioning project. And basically, the money would be used to purchase materials. Labor would come from my staff to do the installation. And this is the only air conditioning project we're doing in the building, just the library. And it would bring all the elementary schools pretty much up to snuff as far as having some space that's air-conditioned for, on specifically hot days.
Councilor LaBarge?
I see on here, it does state that Ryan Road does not have air conditioning, but they use the ceiling fans?
That's correct.
Can you explain what would the difference be between the air conditioning and the ceiling fans? I'm just looking health-wise, because when you have children out in the hot weather, coming in, no air conditioning, I mean, ceiling fans don't resolve that problem. Not like air conditioning.
That's correct. The ceiling fans at Ryan will basically move the air around, and by opening the perimeter doors, they are bringing in, at least they're moving the air through the library. It is not air conditioning, that's true. So obviously, at some point, we did work in the perimeter rooms at the library a number of years ago to basically deal with ventilation issues there. We still need to address the library, but at least they have some system in place to move the air.
I hope that's also looked at too, because I think with what is going on here with the Jackson Street School, I am really happy that this is going to happen there. Because some of the children who have allergies and so forth, and they're out in that hot weather and coming into a school building that has no circulation of air, is not healthy.
And the other thing I'll just note is that we're, I'm asking for two readings on this tonight, because we'd like to get this done in the next couple of weeks, before the hot weather does set in.
Any other questions in finance, or any other councillors? Then, in finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Positive?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Then, the next order is for the Bridge Street School playground. Oh, no, for the order, yeah. Upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, order that whereas the Bridge Street School submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding to rehabilitate the school's playground, and whereas the project will provide funding for design and construction costs to rehabilitate the school playground so that the school, its neighbors, and the city visitors will have a healthy, sustainable playground, and whereas the school department will be required to find a snow storage location that will not damage the playground and will not make it unsafe throughout the year, and whereas the school department shall use its best efforts to coordinate with DPW and other city departments to ensure that crosswalks leading to the playground and school are properly signed and painted and maintained, so as to properly serve its function, and that they'll work with the DPW and the Department of Recreation to assess whether additional crosswalks are necessary given increased neighborhood activity anticipated from both the playground and the proposed improvements to the adjacent Lampren Park. And whereas the school department will coordinate with the city's Department of Recreation in an effort to install complimentary improvements to Lampren Park. And whereas on April second, two thousand and fourteen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore, it be ordered that a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Bridge Street School playground rehabilitation, and that the grantees meet conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand is appropriated from the CPA budget reserve.
Move to send it forward to the full city council.
Second.
Second.
Second, in finance, all right? Any questions? And who's, come on up.
Sarah LeValle.
Sarah is here to speak. She's the coordinator with the CPC committee, so we'll have a bunch of questions on this. Please, any questions for Sarah? Ms. Councilor LaBarge?
Sarah, there was, I'm supporting this a hundred percent, there's no question about this. But can you explain the process of that playground? What had happened here, where many of the parents got together through the PTO, and there was a lot of concerns about health conditions in that playground? Can you talk about that?
As we heard from the project applicants at the, at the school, it's a really dusty playground. It's beaten up for a lot of years, and really just wasn't usable.
And teachers also were complaining? And can you talk about the process, about the windows and so forth, how it actually affected? That they could not open the windows, they had to keep them closed?
Yeah, it was so bad that not only was the playground impacted, but during the warmer months, when you'd want to open the windows and get some outside air, and it was so dusty that a lot of times, the school wouldn't be able to.
So there was a concern of health issues, correct?
Yes, definitely.
And the playground area itself is used not just by Bridge Street School, but many people throughout the city and around the neighborhoods do use that playground just like we do at Ryan Road School, correct?
Yes, it's definitely a center of the neighborhood that gets a lot of use.
Okay, so you can start talking about the process?
There are, the applicant is also here, and they've been involved in a lot of it that I have, so they may be better equipped to speak to that.
And there, the CPA wasn't a question about, they put some restrictions in regards to, because there is always this huge mound of snow in the back?
Yeah, these, these conditions that you see in the council order typically would just be included in the contract with the applicant. But as a result of some comments that we had during the last round, and councillors wanted to see more detailed orders, we included them in the financial order here.
Now, recent changes in the CPC legislation at the state level now make us able to use those funds for existing facilities like this playground?
That is correct.
So we, in the beginning, we couldn't do this, but now we can?
No, you previously could only use CPA funds for brand-new playgrounds.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I support this. I had a, I spoke with Downey Meyer on Sunday about all these orders. And just something small I wanted to point out was that in the third, fourth, and fifth, whereas we require the school department to do certain things, and I don't believe we can mandate them to do certain things, I believe they're outside of our jurisdiction. Mr. Meyer told me that he would follow up with the solicitor on that. Are you aware if he did? If not, could you just see if we can get that straightened out by second reading?
That I'm not aware of, but these conditions would be imposed on applicants by the committee anyway, in contracts. So it's not really the city council telling the school department that they have to do something. It's the committee as a grantee, as a grantor, telling them that they have to do that.
I understand, but it's a council order, so, you know, I, if, so I would request that you ask that question to the solicitor if you.
Okay, I can check on that, and as an alternative, we also could just strike that from the order if the council doesn't want to vote on it this way.
No, I mean, I don't think it arises to the.
Before we do second reading?
Right, we could do a second reading.
Any other questions on this one for Sarah? Then, all in favor in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have another playground. Upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, order that whereas the Northampton Recreation Department and the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for a playground created at the Florence Fields and Lampren Park. And whereas the project will create playgrounds at both Florence Fields Recreation Area and Lampren Park. And whereas the project leverages two-hundred thousand dollars in Massachusetts' R Common Backyards Grant. And whereas the applicant shall coordinate with the city school, with the city school department and Bridge Street School Parents and Advisory Committee to develop the park improvements that complement the existing design for the Bridge Street School playground, and report to the CPC prior to construction. Whereas on April second, two thousand and fourteen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore, it be ordered that fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Recreation Department and the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability for playground creation, and that the grantee meets the condition approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, fifty thousand is appropriated from the CPC budget reserves. A motion on this one?
Motion to send it forward.
Second.
Okay. Questions for Ms. LaValle on this one?
Have we heard about whether our application for our Common Backgrounds grant?
Well, let's recognize Mr. Biden.
Direct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The grant has been approved, we actually have a signed contract.
The grant has been approved, we actually have a signed contract.
Excellent.
And for both playgrounds, though?
That's correct.
That's great.
That's great.
More questions on this one, Ms. LaBelle, are we good?
One more.
Oh, yes, please.
So there'll be a kind of public comment opportunity for residents in that area to talk about how they want Lampren Park to be, or their ideas for Lampren Park?
There will be.
I understand. And so since there's some urgency in getting work done on the Bridge Street School Playground as well as Lampren Park, kind of before school starts again, do you know when that first forum might be expected to occur roughly?
Don't know the answer. The city has engaged Berkshire Design to start doing the work, they're doing preliminary work they need to have before they do that forum, but I'm not sure the answer to when the forum will be.
So it'll be Berkshire Design for both, and so that'll help also with making sure they sync up.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Biden, could you throw the light switch again? We have some counselors are looking a little shady over here. Just look at the monitor and there's, we can't see them.
For the Florence Fields, have we figured out how we're going to fund the future maintenance of them?
I know that the mayor asked DPW to give him a projection of what they needed for staffing, but I'm not part of that operational budget.
He's here, he'll be here on second reading.
Good. So again, all in favor of this one? Positive?
Aye.
Any finance? Thank you. All right. We have another, a bunch of financial orders tonight. Let's not say Christopher Heights.
That's right.
Whereas the City of Northampton and the Grantham Group submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Christopher Heights Affordable Assisted Living Project, and whereas the project will provide 34 units of affordable assisted living and a new 83-unit assisted living residence at Village Hill, with affordability restrictions to be held by the City of Northampton and the Department of Housing and Community Development, and whereas the master plan for redevelopment of the former state hospital includes assisted living, and whereas the Grantham Group has an excellent record of creating affordable assisted living in Massachusetts, and whereas on January 2, 2013, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee and the city council awarded $120,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project, and whereas on April 2, 2014, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that additional $130,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project, to be utilized within the same timeframe as the first appropriation, and whereas the city's total commitment of local funds is at a very low per-unit cost to develop regionally and locally in-demand type of affordable housing, now therefore it be ordered that $130,000 be appropriated for the Community Preservation Act funding to the City of Northampton for Christopher Heights Assisted Living Affordable Housing Project for the creation of 43 affordable assisted living units, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically, $130,000 is appropriated from the CPC Affordable Housing Reserve. We have a motion on this one?
I'll approve.
Second? Okay.
Can we recognize Wayne Biden?
He's, this is Terry's project, so we're going to.
Do you recognize Terry?
Terry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And questions for Terry? Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. Terry, there's 83 units, 43 units of affordable assisted living, and can you talk about the other 40 units?
I.
Composition, Walter?
Sure. Forty will be private pay market rate, so forty will be private pay market rate, and the 43 units will fall under a guideline of 60% less than the median income.
So what happens with the 40-unit apartments? If something happens financially, what happens to them?
That's the great, one of the great things about our program is when a resident runs out of money and can no longer afford to pay a market rate rent, they would go on to a low-income program, and they would still stay in that same apartment. We're able to flop the number of units, the area of the units, so it doesn't have to be, if 201 was a market rate unit, that doesn't have to stay market rate forever, that unit can go ahead and be low-income tomorrow.
What is the, you talk about on this ordinance, what is the low-per-unit cost? What does that mean?
I believe the, out of the 43 units, I think it's roughly $5,000 to $6,000 per unit that the Community Preservation Committee is putting towards the affordability component of it, and I think in the graph it had shown, they have spent, the Community Preservation Committee has spent much more to bring in one affordable housing unit. I don't have the exact figures, but it was over $25,000, I believe, per unit was the average.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry, as I recall, when we did the $120,000, that was being used to leverage some other money from other sources?
One more question.
Earlier, we were seeking those funds.
Yeah, sure. Should I come up? Okay, sure.
And introduce yourself.
Sure, my name is, thank you, counselors, my name is Walter Rohanian from the Grantham Group, and you're correct, I was here about a year ago, and originally, we had proposed to use the first $120,000 to be put towards the TIF. The Department of Housing and Community Development did not like that idea, they had wanted to see the money go to bricks and mortar. The application that we had did not get funded, so we're in, again, right now, and we'll find out hopefully in July if the project gets funded.
That was my concern about the TIF.
Yeah, which has been absolved.
Counselor Spector?
Assuming the project is funded, when would you hope to break ground on this? When would you submit plans?
Yeah, we already have planning board approval, which we received in October of 2012. Our goal is to break ground sometime by October.
Do you have any plans to bring these plans forward, just to get any of the community input of residents or other people in the area? Have you done that yet?
We did, we actually had a meeting with the Village Hill community, the mayor had set up a meeting, I believe it was at the senior center, and we had roughly 30 or 40 people that had attended and gave input towards the project itself.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So could you just piece together for me?
Sure.
Originally, I think our total commit was going to be the 120.
Correct.
And, so what, what didn't happen that we're now in for another 130?
Okay, so we originally applied in October of 2012 with DHCD to go ahead and get the credits, and it was based on a $13.4 million project. Over the two years, the project has actually gone to close to $14 million, and so we're looking to help offset some of those costs, and one of the things that we've done is gone back to the Community Preservation Committee to help alleviate some of that cost as well. In addition, our hope is that it shows the Department of Housing and Community Development that there's a large city support here, that they would like to see an affordable assisted living within the community, and their support to the project will hopefully help give them the presence that they'll say, you know what, the city's behind it, we want to see this project move forward, let's go ahead and have it get funded for the tax credits.
Right, and what is the size of the grant you're applying for?
It's $5 million of low-income housing tax credits and $1 million of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so $6 million would come in from the state.
$6 million, R250, and then how do you finance the rest of it?
Conventional financing, through a local bank, actually. We already have a commitment letter from a local bank.
For the balance.
Correct.
Other questions? Counselor Spector, did you have a question?
I asked it.
Okay, any other questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote in finance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Housing Supportive Services.
Here you go.
Oh, they're in the wrong order. We can do them out of work, can't we? Which one is this Housing Supportive Service? Well, hang on to that one, too. Whereas the Northampton Housing Partnership submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for Housing Supportive Services, a program to hire resource manager to work with low-income housing residents to ensure they're able to maintain its sanity, and whereas the project will work to ensure that low- and moderate-income residents of Northampton are able to sustain and thrive within the Northampton community housing, and whereas the project is supported by numerous community stakeholders, including the Northampton Housing Authority, Half Valley CDC, ServiceNet, Home City Housing, and the Hampshire County Housing Court, and whereas the housing needs assessment commissioned by the Northampton Housing Partnership with funding from the CPA found homeless preservation to be high priority for the city. Further, without supportive services to keep residents in affordable housing, many Northampton families and individuals are in danger of losing their homes and consequently becoming homeless, and whereas the private, whereas the grantee will report to the city on the effectiveness of the program, including eviction prevention, to ensure that the CPA funds are being effectively utilized, with a metric that must be approved by the Community Preservation Committee prior to the disbursement of any funds, and whereas the grantee shall present the selected proposal and rationale for the selection of that proposal to the Community Preservation Committee at a regular meeting of the CPC prior to the disbursement of funds, and whereas on April 12, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $195,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project, now therefore it be ordered that $195,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Housing Partnership for the Housing Supportive Services Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, specifically, $164,926 is appropriated from the CPC Affordable Housing Reserve, and $30,074 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve account. We have a motion on this?
Move to approve, but I just wanted to let you know, counselor, you skipped one.
I skipped the whereas, which one did I skip?
No, you skipped Rocky Hill Open Space, number six.
Just got them out of order. I've got it. We'll go back and do it.
I'm just letting you know.
Yes, we know that, we just cut the orders out of order. But this order is in order, and we have a motion on it.
I'm giving you an order.
Okay, good. So discussion on this one?
There we go.
I have several questions on this, and I spoke to Mr. Meyer about it, but then a bunch more questions popped up. For one, the Gazette in April 14 said that the Northampton Housing Partnership is going to select a community agency to run the program?
Yes.
I don't see that in the order. Am I reading it? Am I missing it?
That, that's reflected in the committee's having to approve the selected agency.
Okay, so it's outside of the order? I'm just asking.
Yes, it was in the application, which is incorporated by reference.
Another question I have is, of the $195,000, Downey Meyer said about 95% will go to salaries. Is that accurate?
Yes, so this application completely funds a specified person to work directly with individuals facing eviction.
How would a person facing eviction learn about these services?
Through this, this person that will be hired.
Well, okay, and then how would that person find them?
This person will work with property managers and the housing court and the Northampton Housing Authority directly.
Okay, and now, does it matter what they're facing eviction for? I mean, they could be, it could be, it could be non-payment of rent, it could be, you know, maybe a felony conviction if they're in public housing, does it, does it matter what the eviction's for?
It doesn't. As you know, there's many reasons that a person could face eviction, and there's different resources that are available depending on the reason and also to anyone facing eviction, but a lot of times, these individuals aren't really aware of the services that are available to them.
Now, they go, they would go to court, for example, with them?
They would, yes, they could, that's a possibility.
But one of the things people get evicted for, and the vast majority of the time, is are non-payment of rent, so I'm wondering, this person could attend court with them, but what could they really do for them in that situation?
Financial counseling could be an option in a case like that, so that it could, you could teach someone how to do a budget to set aside enough money to pay your rent.
And the other thing is that I know some agencies, like ServiceNet, for example, who supports this, have outreach workers that do this already, so it seems to me like it might be duplicative with some, with things that some agencies already do.
We heard from ServiceNet and some other agencies that they're able to do some of this in a limited capacity, but they really need a person who's dedicated who can do this all the time. They may be able to offer one service, another agency offers a different service, but it's sort of scattered, and someone facing eviction has to jump around and doesn't really have someone dedicated to work with them.
Thank you.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, thanks. I talked with Pat Keller about this, and she said even the Hampshire County Housing Court was in full support of this, and I remember last year bringing in Housing Partnership of the great concerns of what was happening out there with people losing their homes, okay, their apartments or whatever. I feel this is the right way to go. If you look at hiring somebody, because all these agencies can't get out there, and I think by hiring this one individual for three years, who will be able to work with whoever from housing, of getting a list of who is going to need that support from that manager, who will also have restrictions of how he has to report, or she, to the CPA, and how that funding is being used, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It was very important to the committee to know exactly how many evictions this program will.
Exactly, to see if it's going to be a success or is it not working.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, but I know Pat Keller and Housing Partnership really felt that this needed to be done, and I kind of agree, because I think financially, people need to have somebody to show them how to handle their money instead of becoming homeless again, so I feel it is worth it.
And remind us again what the term is of this program?
This will be three years.
Three, so this funding is for three years?
Three years.
So getting to the question of what can actually be done for tenants who have trouble paying their rent, my understanding is part of this might include assigning a representative payee to the tenant, so someone is actually taking over your payments for you if you have difficulties, physical or mental or circumstantial or whatever, in doing that. That's, that's part of this?
Yes, it could be, yes, that's correct.
Possibly, could be, and I imagine also a referral to, if you do have, if you need mental health treatment, for example, and that's kind of part of your issue in paying your rent, then that could be another function that this is providing tenants.
This person would be able to work with individuals and customize each program depending on what the individual facing eviction requires.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this, or the Counselor LaBarge?
When Counselor Murphy had talked about how a new program was added on through the CPA, I think this one also is a new one when it comes to housing.
Yeah, the changes in the CPA law that were enacted recently did make this an eligible project.
All right, more questions?
Just, do you know if any other community has done it? Because it is kind of innovative, that's kind of what I, part of what I like about it. It's not a brick-and-mortar housing project, it's a different approach to keeping people.
Not something exactly like this, this will be a first.
Well, I think that it's actually good that we're a first in that respect.
I'm personally glad the CPC committee wants to quantify it and get reports on it and see if, you know, after three years, if it was worth the investment, because it is a new thing, and I like the fact that they're going to hold the project accountable to report its progress and its successes, so.
And the Housing Partnership was also completely in favor of that, they're hoping that they can show that the program is successful, that they'll be able to find funding from other sources as well.
Counselor Adams?
Could you just explain how they'll be reporting on their own successes? Because it seems to me like they have a financial interest in stating that they are successful.
The Housing Partnership isn't actually making any money from doing this, so they'll be reporting to the committee about.
Okay, so they're reviewing them, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions on this one? All right, all in favor in finance?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Right. Now we're going to go back and deal with the other one. Whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission and the Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted a CPA application for the purchase of 48-acre parcel to serve as a wildlife connector between Arcadia, the Oxbow, and the State Hospital open space areas, and whereas this environmentally important location will provide opportunities for trail and habitat connections, and whereas the project will allow a multi-use trail connector between Ice Pond and Manhattan Rail Trails, and whereas the Conservation Commission shall sponsor a zoning change to rezone the parcel as farm, forest, and rivers upon the commission's taking title, and whereas the threat of residential development exists and would result in wild left, lost wildlife protection opportunities, and whereas the project meets the And whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable Northampton Plan, Northampton Community Preservation Plan, and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan to protect open space and provide for passive recreation. And whereas on April 2nd, 2014, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $200,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used for the project. Now therefore it be ordered that $200,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Rocky Hills Open Space Acquisition Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, $200,000 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve. Motion on this one?
To approve.
Second. All right. Want to tell us about this one?
Sure. So this was a priority in the open space plan for protection, both for the wildlife values that it has. It's a connector between Arcadia and the Western Hills. And also for a trail connection between the Ice Pond Trail Spur, which currently doesn't go anywhere, and the Manhattan Rail Trail. And this is really the only viable area where the city could hope to put a trail connection.
Do you have a map or something so we can see where this property is?
There was a map in the application, I don't have one.
We don't have a map here?
No.
Can you tell us where it is?
This is, if you're driving towards East Hampton and you go under the Bike Path Bridge, it's on the right. It had a "For Sale" sign in front of it for quite some time.
And is it residentially zoned?
It is owned business park.
It is owned business park? Because I know that it says it would prevent residential development, but I didn't think there was something residentially zoned over there.
No, it's owned business park.
It's owned business park.
It's behind the owners.
Property's owned by Carol Hughes, who lives in Pensacola, Florida.
And my question is, reading this, Wayne, apparently there could be a threat to develop that 48 acres?
So it's on the market. One thing to be clear is, we do not, usually come before you when we have a signed option. We don't have a signed option for this, so this deal may not go anywhere. But having, being ready to go forward seems like the best way to help our negotiations. But the property's on the market, she believes it's worth more than we're offering, but so it's on the market for housing development. And the problem is, Mass Audubon's been looking for years with the city as a way to connect Mass Audubon, the State Hospital, and the western part of the city, and we've been looking for offer, the Bike Path connection.
So the owner does know that the city is interested in it, correct? And have you already said to her $200,000?
So this is CPA, it would be a larger number than this.
Oh, okay. I thought that was low.
We can't legally pay more than appraised value. So we offered her to pay exactly what appraised value is. She thought the appraisal was low, and we couldn't offer more even if we wanted to. We believe, because we're willing to offer appraised value, that she's very likely to do a market test and then come back to us. But if she doesn't, we wouldn't take this grant.
At 43 acres or 48 acres, and it is zoned where apparently homes could be built on it, how many homes do you think, or give me an estimate, that could be built on that property?
Probably six, possibly seven. But the problem is, it would require a lot of infrastructure to do that, and that's what brings the value down, is that, you know, you look at six or seven lots, and it sounds like a lot, but you spend, you know, half a million dollars in infrastructure and not so much anymore.
I know the area, and I agree about the connection with it, and I think it is a right move, so I just wanted to let you know.
You mentioned Mass Audubon, are they partners in this financially, or have they been...
They're not equal partners, but certainly they're partners in this. One of the things, whenever we buy land with CPA, we're required to put a conservation restriction on it. Most nonprofits want an endowment for that conservation restriction to cover their cost. Mass Audubon's happy to take a CR, and they'd be responsible for fundraising, their own piece of that. They may be willing to help with fundraising as well to help us get beyond the CPA piece. So it's only been partners until it gets unsigned, I don't exactly what that means in terms of dollar amount.
Didn't they help us out once before?
Yes, they've been wonderful partners before, a couple other times, yes.
Consular Adams?
Just a couple of things. And the fourth whereas, I don't think we can mandate the Conservation Commission to sponsor a zoning change, and that's because they're a part of the, they're an agency of the executive branch, and I don't think we could do that. So I'd request maybe if we could change that language by second reading. My other point is that I support this, and I support all open space purchases. But when we're talking about the threat of residential development, I think we need to consider that we're running out of developable properties in the city and simultaneously trying to expand our tax base. So, you know, in the back of my mind, and I think other people's minds, we wonder just, and I always ask this question to you, Wayne, just how much are we trying to preserve in this city? Because, you know, it's important to preserve land, for the environment, for other reasons, but it's also important to develop and increase the tax base, so they're more contributors to the tax base. And so when we talk about the threat of residential development, I don't want to always consider it a threat. I want us to consider that we do have to expand our tax base.
I agree with you. I think, and I wasn't involved with writing this, but I think what the CPA committee was thinking in that language is the threat being site-specific. On this particular site, it's not an appropriate place for housing. You're absolutely right, we need spots. You know, certainly these 73 housing units that were just announced to the State Hospital is wonderful, and we absolutely need those kinds of units. I don't disagree with the premise, and the language probably should have said the threat in the middle of a sensitive wildlife corridor or something like that.
Thank you. Consular Barch?
Just, I'm glad that you mentioned the site-specific. This location, in fact, the value of this particular tract along Route 10 towards East Hampton for the wildlife as a corridor for folks, for the animals from Arcadia and that area up to the State Hospital was brought up when we first were talking about the industrial park on Route 10.
Yes.
Really large concern then, so I'm glad that there's some movement on this, possible movement, and I hope that it'll work out with the property owner.
It actually reminded me, so if I could, it's about that controversy. So one of my first tasks when I was hired 25 years ago was to try to find some compromise about what became the business park. Because there were some people wanting to preserve it all because of wildlife corridor, and some want to develop it all. And the business park zoning that eventually passed said this land could be developed, but not within 200 feet of a stream, and only 50% of the land could be developed. And because of all the resources within the State Hospital, this land sat there for 25 years, not developed. So this is actually half an equation that you guys just voted on about six months ago. So if you remember, there's a parcel of land owned by the Raymond family, which was also zoned business park, which only would have allowed 50% of the site to be developed. And you, at our request, rezone that property general industrial, to say this land is the right part of the business park, we can get intense development, let's use every inch of that property. This parcel we're talking about tonight is the opposite of the business park, the land that shouldn't be preserved. So going back to your comment about what's the right place for development for both commercial and residential, the southerly part of the business park, I hope gets much more densely developed than originally envisioned, the northerly part, I hope, doesn't get there.
Though this, it is now a zoned business park.
That's correct.
Business park does not permit residential development.
No, business park does.
Does?
So business park, the site business park used to be suburban residential. When it was zoned business park, it kept all the uses that suburban residential allow by right, and then it allowed business park on top of it. That's what makes it different from our industrial districts.
But it also has commercial potential.
That's correct.
And that's one thing that really does concern me, because, and I have usually no objections to buying open space in places that aren't developable, this is on Route 10, which has commercial capacity, and we still have residential land we can develop, but we have a very limited amount of commercial land we can develop.
You're absolutely right, this parcel doesn't have real commercial capacity. The reason it was added to the business park was the original vision for the business park was some open space, some housing, some businesses. This site, the only frontage it has in Route 10 is between the Bike Path and the road in a deep pit that's pure wetlands.
That's why I was kind of looking for a map, because that, where is it in that strip?
We can send it to you, but yeah, this site, both the frontage on Route 66 is all wetlands except for the gravel road that goes to the gas pumping station, and the frontage on Route 10 is all wetlands with a steep slope. So the area you could do six homes...
Is it between, there's a red dwelling there and the Bike Path? Is it located in between?
The parcel in between is actually owned by Rayner Door, where they plan to move their business. And it's actually behind Rayner Door. So it has, it is a three-acre parcel on Route 10 that's all wetlands, then it's broken up by the Bike Path, the parcels don't connect, and then it goes up a steep hill. So that's why the Route 10 access is sort of illusory.
Okay. Well, what I'll do is, in between readings, I'll catch up with the map and see exactly where it is.
And frankly, it's listed, so you can look up the listing for it.
Very good. Any other questions in finance? All in favor?
Aye.
And this is the fairgrounds. Whereas the Hampshire Franklin Hamden Agricultural Society, which is the three-county fair, submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for preservation study of the three-county fair grandstand. And whereas the project study would determine costs and methodology to preserve and modernize historic listing of the grandstand, and whereas CPA funds would be used only on development of plans for historic preservation of the structure and not for adaption purposes. And whereas the Northampton Fairgrounds is the longest continuously running fair in the country, and the fairgrounds has embarked on a long-range development of its grounds, the master plan identifies refurbishment of the grandstand as an important component of the redevelopment. And whereas on April 2nd, 2014, the Community Preservation Committee voted four to two to recommend that $26,500 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore it be ordered that $26,500 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Hampshire Franklin Hamden Agricultural Society for the grandstand study, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, the $26,500 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Questions for Sarah on this one?
Yes, Sarah. I know I had called Wayne's office on Wednesday. I have great concerns, and I'd like to know that it was voted on a four to two. What were the reasons why the other two did not support this?
So the entire committee likes the project as a whole. They think that the grandstand is a really unique and special structure and would like to see it preserved. The two no votes were due to discussions about funding the feasibility study rather than the actual historic repairs to the building, and also some concerns about what the results of the study could be. And it could be possible that the study comes back and says that there's really no way to adapt the grandstand and preserve its historic features. So it was just those unknowns that made those two people vote against it.
Consular Adams?
Well then, if that's the case, wouldn't this be premature?
It isn't, the committee has funded feasibility studies in the past for historic projects. One of them was the Leeds Pedestrian Bridge, and it's sort of, you're taking a gamble. You might get a huge return on investment, or you might not. But it's really hard to find these upfront.
But what I'm saying is, if it turns out, was there concern that the feasibility study might show that this is not worth saving? Because what I'm saying, if that's...
No, just because it is such an important building to the fairgrounds, and they are committed to saving it. But there are a lot of unknowns.
Okay. Are there any other ways of obtaining historic listing? I mean, is there only one way?
On the National Register?
Yeah, I mean, is there a way, I mean, is there a way of avoiding this expense? Is that not possible?
You could obtain listing on the National Register and not do the feasibility study, but then the fairgrounds would be in the same place that they are now, that they have this building that is really tough to use and doesn't really meet their needs.
Is that a question, look, Consular Adams?
That's a questionable one. I cannot believe that there wouldn't be any records of this being of historical preservation.
Oh, it's clearly a historic building.
Why a study at $26,500?
So the study will enable the fairgrounds to figure out how they can retrofit this historic structure and make it more usable, and what they need to do to repair it and make sure that it's safe and usable in the long term.
Consular Adams?
Could I request the minutes of that meeting for a next reading, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular.
Other questions? Consular Adams?
I think one of the results of the fairgrounds being the longest continuously running fair in the country is that it's old. And so I know the fairgrounds has also been looking at, there's, right on Bridge Street, we're not far from it, there's an old structure that they've been wanting to tear down for a while, too. Even that's been a challenge, you wouldn't think it is, to tear down a structure, but yet that is part of the process of renovating the fairgrounds and trying to turn it into an economic, more of an economic asset for the city of Northampton. So I think from time to time, you have to do these studies to determine whether, or how you go about preserving some of these very old structures. If they figure out how to turn this into a question, maybe I just won't do it. What do you think about that?
I like that one, right.
Like jeopardy here? So it's not going to turn into a question?
Well, she thought of it.
What do you think? Consular Adams?
So is it likely that if this passes, there'll be further requests?
There may be, depending on the results of the study and the expense involved and possible grants and timing, then the fairgrounds could potentially come back with another request.
Is that another question, look, or are you all set?
Go ahead.
No, do you have a question?
I'm fine.
You're fine, all right. And any other questions? And in finance, all in favor?
Aye.
I said aye.
I said aye. All right, I'm going to abstain from this one. So I'm abstaining from that. I think this is the last one. Yeah, once we get one more, then we can do the business.
One more.
Whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for a survey of the Sawmill Hills, and whereas the project will survey, blaze, and monitor existing boundaries, and will allow the commission to prepare for future acquisitions of surrounding property. And whereas similar surveys in the Mineral Hills, Broad Brook, and Fitzgerald Lake areas have proven extremely useful for the commission for stewardship and planning activities. And whereas on April 2nd, 2014, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that $40,000 in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore it be ordered that $40,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Conservation Commission for Sawmill Hills survey, and the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, the $40,000 is appropriated from the CPA budgeted reserve.
Look to approve.
Second. All right. Consular Barch?
Sarah, this $40,000 is being used strictly for Sawmill Hills?
Correct.
At how many acres? How many acres of property are you surveying?
About 600.
That's what you're trying to find out.
Yes, that's true. The Sawmill Hills is one area where we don't really have a good handle on property boundaries.
Is this the area, Wayne, because you and I have been working with some of my residents on Sebastian Road, about having problems with boundary lines, where some of my residents felt that because it was their private property, that there was a problem with the city not having the boundary lines and people coming on their properties? Okay.
That's correct. Some of the parcels in the Sawmill Hills have been surveyed and the boundaries marked, and many have not been. The land, you know, it's sort of the oddest area in my experience in town. Many areas like Fitzgerald Lake, some would own a large parcel of land. The Sawmill Hills, if you look at deeds going back 100 years ago, you'd own a house in Florence Center and a woodlot in the Sawmill Hills. So the boundaries were much less defined than they were elsewhere. All these long linear parcels, so, yes.
So we are looking at 600 acres more to do?
That's the top of my head, I don't remember the exact number, it's the right ballpark, but I'm not exactly sure.
Thank you.
And we're going to survey land that we currently own, and then land that we don't own, but we may be interested in acquiring. own, but we may be interested in acquiring at some point.
That's correct. And, and most importantly, sort of control to tie everything together. So even where we have multiple surveys for individual parcels, the two surveys don't always agree with each other. So creating a good control helps us both now and in the future.
And what's the mix roughly? I mean, how much do we own? How much is land we don't own?
Most of it's land that we own, and then the parcel we don't own are the ones that we are butting.
Okay.
That's fine.
Was that the question?
Yeah.
Counselor Adams, if you have a question? Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask actually about the blazing specifically. Because I know that up in Roberts Hill on Ward 7, we actually had David Litterer come and do blazing as a volunteer. And he's done a number of blazing in all kinds of conservation areas all over, you know, the cities of western Massachusetts. And that might be one way to look at some savings in terms of that piece of this project.
So I, I don't know him, but we're, we would tend to want to do is have a surveyor blaze the boundaries the first time, make sure there's good pins, make sure we know control. And once they're in, we're happy to have volunteers go through and refresh those blazes every two years. But we're not comfortable frankly, having a forester or someone with less accuracy do the first cut.
So you're talking about blazing boundary lines?
Not the trails.
Not the blazing paths.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, trails are much more flexible, assuming they're on our property, but it's the boundary lines.
Thanks for that, Claire.
And we're, we're also doing a project where we'll begin to put signs up on our boundaries facing both ways, entering the property saying, you're entering conservation land, here's the rules, and leaving the property saying, you're entering private property, don't trespass.
So that process is included in the cost here?
No, once, once we have a surveyor blaze the boundaries, then, then we can find the boundaries easily and we go up with volunteers and put them. We already have metal signs, that's easy. We just want to put them on our property and not off our property.
And Counselor, are you?
Yes, and I want to thank you, Wayne, for helping us out on Sylvester Road and working with our residents so that we could solve this problem. And I think it's a very good idea on how you're handling this. Thank you.
Counselor Barge, this is the area where your residents have had issues, so this will help that problem today.
And also Alyssa's, too.
Any other questions on this one? So in finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Your winner, Paul.
Did you?
So now in finance-
For any question?
No.
Like what she's asking is, you know, we've done this in finance. When it comes up to vote in reg- in full council, you don't have any more questions for Sarah, then she can-
Nope. Bye.
No, there are other issues that we need to have Mr. Fiden here for as well on the-
He's got something later.
Okay.
So now, Mr. Adams has requested some new business in finance, so we'll see what Mr. Counsel, Mr. Adams has new businesses.
I've, we all noticed that it seems, I think, redundant and inefficient to have a finance committee meeting and talk about those exact things.
Could you speak louder, please?
Sure. It seems redundant to have a finance committee meeting, which really consists of four members of the council, even though it probably looks like the entire council, because the, the whole council is free to contribute, and then have the full council discuss those same exact things right after in the regular, regular meeting. So what I'm hoping to do is, if there is interest, try to make it more efficient and do away with that.
Counselor Specter?
Yeah, I would agree with that. As long as there was the option, because the finance committee on occasion does need to meet outside of the, of this meeting. So as long as there remained that option, that if the finance committee needed to meet and call a meeting outside, but I, I agree. I think it's kind of, we all kind of take part, we hear the discussion, think, our last meeting was really clear. We had one item on the finance committee, and we said, let's just refer this to the whole, let's not even have the finance. And it works just as well. So I, I really don't see the benefit of having finance committee and then bringing it all back again.
And Counselor Barge?
Counselor Adams, I thought you had concerns of us not having 10 meetings in our regular finance committee. And I thought, hearing from you, that we would continue on with a finance committee, a regular finance committee, versus having it here.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying we should necessarily do away with finance committee meetings outside of, of this council, if they're necessary. But what I don't see as necessary is discussing these matters in finance and then discussing them in the full, with the full council right after. I spoke with Counselor Murphy earlier today, and we were talking about how we have not had any meetings outside of the full council. We've had finance committee meetings within the full council meetings, but have not had that third meeting.
10 of them.
10, going on 11 a month, 11 months in a row. And the reason why is because, well, I guess Counselor Murphy can answer that, but we don't, once, once we discuss them here, they haven't needed, they haven't needed the third meeting. So.
And I can explain some of the rationale, because I did speak with the council president on this topic at the beginning of the session. Having, continuing with this, he called it, I think, a kabuki theater of having, initially, of having finance here and not doing finance separately and then bringing things here. And, and I actually was an advocate for a couple of reasons, and I talked to Counselor Adams about this today. First of all, we don't duplicate the discussion. We have the discussion in finance, and then we simply vote in council. We could certainly have a finance committing, or committee earlier in the day, but that would be a burden to the staff, because they'd come to finance, and then they come here again to make the case to all of you. We thought, in the end, it was a best practice that we all do it together. First of all, it kind of almost extends the size of finance to the whole council, because while there's only four of us voting, you all get to participate in the discussion. And it's only one discussion, one time, essentially, because when we bring it up in full council, all we do is vote on it, because we've already just had the discussion. And it, it, it doesn't require the other counselors to come to a different finance committee, and it allows us to have finance here together. And it also puts finance on television. If we move it away from this period of time, then it isn't on television. And I think municipal finance is important, not just to the finance committee, but to all the counselors equally and to all of the constituents equally. I think you'll agree, in the time you've been here, people are always asking about where the money's going. So it was more inclusive, it got it on television. And to the third meeting, yep, because we do try, in fact, in the past, we've had the audit presentation often in finance. And with Susan Wright, we agreed, let's do it in the full council, because it's everybody's business. So we actually made a conscious decision to keep it the way it is, because it really doesn't extend the meeting, because when it's time for council to vote, we just vote. We don't have to discuss it again. And it includes everyone, and it gets it on television. The other thing that, that kind of makes a difference is that we don't have the third meeting. We only do that when there's something specifically to deal with that we haven't dealt with in council, because we already meet twice a month in council. We do the third one if there's something specific to do at it. Like when we sold the Kennedy's, or the Florence Grammar School, a lot of that happened in finance as committee work outside of this body. The report came back here. So we had something to deal with that we did off television in finance committee, because it really was just committee work for most of the time. But that's why it is the way it is. And, and I did review it with the council president prior to our starting this council session to say, should we keep it here or shouldn't we keep it here? And that's why we kept it here. So just some history on it.
Well, we're not going to, I'm, I'm assuming we're not going to make, do anything about this tonight. So I would just, I, I would expect that this is something that will, if there is a change offered by Counselor Adams, that that would be something that will get referred to ordinance and then, and then back. But I do favor the idea of having some way of, well, some way of not having the repeat vote, one after the other, whether it's somehow incorporating all the business into one package or whatever. But it, it does seem silly to-
The one other thing that it does facilitate the way it is, because things go to finance before they come to council. It, it does afford the mayor and the finance director the ability to wait to write up to before the meeting. You know, they can wait until they have to print the agenda to decide what's coming here. So that flexibility allows them to actually add more things in, because a lot occurs between our two meetings. So if it in fact is at the same meeting, that gives them the maximum amount of time to add things to the agenda that might be financially necessary to deal with. So that's why, if it wasn't in the meeting, it should be just before the meeting or the same day, to facilitate them the same deadline for, for publishing their agenda and meeting notice.
I guess what I'm saying is we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves in terms of the, the details on this, because we'd have to be discussed.
Just, I'll just say that what I'm hearing, what I'm taking away is that we'd like the option of not to have redundancy, but not to dispense with the committee entirely, give maybe the mayor the option of presenting it just directly to the full council without finance committee. So I'll see if I can look into that.
Yeah, and we talked about that. Is, does the protocol say it has to go to finance? Or could the mayor just bring it to full council? In which case, you don't need the two votes on this.
Right, right.
That would be interesting.
Maybe we could incorporate all committee meetings into this meeting.
Yeah, I agree. Because it seems like we just are cutting off all these committees, so put them all together.
All right, well, what's-
Motion to adjourn.
Absolutely. All in favor of adjourned finance?
Aye. Aye.
And we're back in the regular meeting. I'll appoint Counselor Klein, Counselor Barge to enrollment. We'll move to the financial order, reprogramming $13,677.51 from Jackson Street School Tile to Library Air Conditioning.
Second.
Is there any further, is there any further discussion on this? Roll call, vote please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
And move suspension of rules for the second read?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move second reading?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Further discussion on this matter? Roll call?
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes. Financial order number three, appropriation of $50,000 from Community Preservation Act funding to Playground Rehabilitation, Bridge Street School. This is on first, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion on this matter? Roll call?
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Financial order number four, appropriation of $130,000 from Community Preservation Act funding to Christopher Heights Assisted Living, Grantham Group, and Northampton Mayor's Office. Is there a motion on first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Financial order number four, appropriation of $130,000 from Community Preservation Act funding to Christopher Heights Assisted Living, Grantham Group, and Northampton Mayor's Office. Is there a motion on first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Financial order number six, appropriation of $195,000 from Community Preservation Act funding to Housing Supportive Services, Northampton Housing Partnership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Financial order number six, appropriation of $195,000 from Community Preservation Act funding to Housing Supportive Services, Northampton Housing Partnership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sierra?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Financial order number seven, appropriation of $26,500 from Community Preservation Act Financial order number seven, appropriation of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from Community Preservation Act funding to Grandstand Preservation, Three County Fairgrounds. Is there a motion on first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Murphy?
Stay.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Financial order number eight, appropriation of forty thousand dollars from Community Preservation Act funding to Sawmill Hill Survey, Northampton Conservation Commission.
Move to approve.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Specter?
Yes.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Move to orders and ordinances. Order number one, change to...
Yeah, we did the survey. Uh, moved to approve.
Okay, so we're on order number one, change to city council rules, rule three, suspension of council rules on first reading. I'll give a brief explanation of this. I was snooping around the charter one night when I was, learned that a practice of ours, we sometimes suspend the rule of referral of certain committee, of certain members who are up for appointments or reappointments. And I noticed from reading the charter that we can't do this, or so I thought. So I asked a solicitor to opine on it, and in his memorandum, he confirmed that that's correct. We can no longer do that. Because that section of the charter states that any department head who is up for appointment, a reappointment, or any member of a multiple member body up for appointment or reappointment, has to go to that committee. So that's all, it doesn't specify anything further. You know, there's no mandate, for example, that an applicant has to come to the committee, for example, that's not mandated. Nothing's mandated as by way of discussion. Just the committee has to take it up. I can read the memorandum if...
We all read it.
We are, haven't.
My question about that, just because we did this at the last meeting where we, it's very rare that it's a new referral that we don't refer. But we did appoint someone to the council on aging based on the testimony of a couple of councillors. And so do we have to do, I mean, since, that was a new, that was a new appointment in terms of, but this memo actually states that even reappointments need to go through that process. So things are, so basically, things will be held up. All re, you know, things will be, well, it says seven to forty-five days. So there is a possibility of a little, the attorney's memo says that we're, our, our rule says that they have to come back within seven to forty-five days. But that still could leave some little limbo period of somebody being unappointed during that little time. Or we'd have to...
I'm also, right, I'm also checking out the old charter to see if there's any language in that old charter in regards to suspension. And if it, and if it does say that we were not supposed to suspend, then we've been in violation. I'm just letting you know.
No, I mean, I would concur because we can suspend a council rule by our own decision, but we can't suspend the charter, which is what councillor Adams pointed out. But I think we may want to, if this is the case, audit the occasions, at least since the beginning of this session, where we did the expeditious appointment of people that we now have got to cycle through.
But there were regular reappointments, so there's many of those.
There's many, yeah.
It doesn't mean we, we just, as the appointments committee, just need to just bring it back, look at it and bring, we don't even have to meet with the people.
So we may want to audit that.
What about the department heads?
Same thing.
But who would be the department heads? I've never seen us do a department head.
Any department head that comes before this council, under this charter.
Who, who have you seen come in?
There haven't, I mean, I haven't seen any.
I think we should have a list of when...
But just those things, those names could just go to the committee. It doesn't mean that the, the committee can use its own judgment in terms of whether to meet with those people or to just review the application.
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah.
But you still can get a list from the mayor's office.
Or look at their minutes.
When we did the evaluation of all the appointments, most of them, we agreed would be appointed by the mayor, we'd consent of the council. So for instance, we just did interviews for a replacement for Joe Cross as an assessor. The mayor will appoint that position and send it to us, and we would have to refer it.
And councillor Carney, like you suggested about the applications...
He has the floor.
No, I'm done.
Okay, councillor O'Donnell?
Happy to yield to...
Councillor LeBarge?
Thank you.
On the applications, even with appointments and evaluations, we've always told the councillors, because there was some issues, there are telephone numbers there, and it gives the rights of every councillor to call who that applicant is at home and talk with them.
Councillor O'Donnell?
My question is, did the solicitor give his opinion about whether in fact we would have to go back and redo the ones?
Uh, he hasn't.
He has not, okay.
Um, so, I mean, that question could be put to him.
If, councillor Specter? If that question is put to him, then the question also should be put to him. A second question would be, how far back do we go? Because we've been doing this for years and years.
If that's the case too, we'd have to ask him if votes that they took could be subject to challenge in our...
So I would suggest, sometimes, as a tax attorney, I heard tell somebody, sometimes it's better not to ask certain questions. And I would suggest, leave well enough alone, and we move forward on this, because sometimes, as you know, it's better not to ask a lawyer a certain question. And I would just move forward on these, and moving forward, we do this in the way that the solicitor has recommended we do it.
Is there any other question? Councillor, I agree, maybe getting that information will be helpful.
And certainly I can't see us going back further than the beginning of this session, let's say.
Well, that, if we start to ask the legal question, it's not then our purview to decide what makes common sense or what we feel like we should do. I would suggest we move forward from here on in and do it according to how the solicitor is suggesting.
Again, just because the solicitor pointed out that seven, that these must be returned, the opinion of the committee must be returned within seven to forty-five days. That we just encourage the mayor's office to make sure that any appointments that are coming to us come well in advance, so that there isn't a matter, because I don't even think that right now we return those within seven to forty-five days regularly.
And sometimes we don't see them, we don't see them, the actual applications, until our minutes get, you know, until our notice and minutes get posted. And there's been a long, the mayor knows they're coming.
Right.
We may want to see if we can set up a protocol, we get them a little early.
Right, that's...
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes, councillor Adams, maybe we could take appointments and evaluations and put them here at city council and let us interview them.
Like finance.
We certainly can do that. So I'll, I'll, I'll read the order. In city council, April seventeenth, twenty fourteen, upon the recommendation of councillor Jesse M. Adams, ordered that the following changes to the city council rules are adopted. Three, suspension of council rules. Suspension of these rules or any part thereof shall require a two-thirds majority of the quorum present. Nothing herein shall be construed to authorize suspension of any provision of the charter of the city of Northampton, or any ordinance of the city of Northampton, or of any federal or state statute, rule or regulation.
Move to refer to committee?
Second.
Um, this, just point of clarification, this was put on for first reading, but I think we should prefer it. So, so, so it was made in second, correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on this rule proposal? All those in favor of referring it to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need a roll call on, no, because it's referral.
Order number two, city council adopts the capital improvement program FY twenty fifteen through FY twenty nineteen. This is on second reading. Is there a motion on second reading?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Order number three, support for private shared vehicle services. This is on first readings.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll read, I'll read it. In city council, April seventeenth, twenty fourteen, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcochitz and the Transportation and Parking Commission. Whereas the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan recommends support for private shared vehicle services, because each well-run car-share vehicle can replace fifteen or more cars, reducing congestion and demand valuable parking spaces, and make urban living with its smaller ecological footprint more viable. And whereas Zipcar is interested in expanding their six-car share, six-car car-share presence at Smith College with a two-car presence downtown, and other services could follow. Ordered that, city council declares a surplus to city needs up to six parking spaces in the John Gare III parking garage and/or in city service parking spaces to be made available for car-sharing services. And further, the mayor is authorized to sign renewable leases in compliance with MGL Chapter Thirty-B to allow car-sharing services to use these spaces and associated space for information signage in return for making the services available to Northampton residents and visitors at no cost to the city and other terms and conditions as the mayor finds reasonable. So it's, motion's been made in second. Discussion on this matter? Councillor Klein?
I first want to state that I do think that Zipcar is a really good alternative for individuals who don't have a car. I just am not sure that we necessarily need to subsidize a for-profit company by offering the parking spaces. And I did a little bit of research on Zipcar. It was founded in Cambridge in two thousand as a small entrepreneurial venture, but it was acquired by Avis in two thousand and fifteen for five hundred million dollars. And just some revenue statistics here, or revenue numbers, in the fourth quarter of two thousand and thirteen, when it was acquired, they, Avis, earned seventy-four million dollars from it, two hundred forty-six million dollars for the full year. So essentially, and I talked to David Pomerance, Northampton's Director of General Services, who told me that the revenue from a space in the John Gare Garage is forty-four hundred thousand dollars per year. So if we're offering two spaces, we're looking at losing almost nine thousand dollars by offering free spaces to a corporation to park their cars. So I just think that, you know, giving an incentive to Zipcar doesn't, it doesn't affect incentivizing the residents of Northampton to use Zipcars. So I just have some question about that piece of this ordinance.
Councillor LeBarge? Councillor O'Donnell?
Councillor, I think you were...
She declined?
Oh, okay. I, this, I was in two committees where this was debated and this was brought up, Transportation, Parking Commission, and EDLU, as you know. And I agree it's a serious, a serious concern. And when we get to the ordinance part of this, we can discuss some of the changes that were made. I observe that the way this order is written, it seems to me it no longer requires that the mayor give the spaces away for free. I, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think it just says that the mayor may lease them according to the terms that he finds reasonable.
Councillor Specter? I was just going to follow up, EdLU, we had this discussion, and perhaps we can recognize, he's already recognized it, because that was my understanding too. Is that what we're doing is the mayor will do the actual contract, and, but if you could clarify that for us.
Sure, that's absolutely true, that the, the mayor will be negotiating a lease, and I'm assuming it's for some consideration. I think that the basic point is probably true, it's probably for less consideration than individual cars would come. So background, we tried to get Zip ten years ago, or eight years ago, and at the time, they would only come and guarantee them ten thousand dollars a year business, which we obviously weren't in a position to do, and they didn't come. We then worked with Smith, and they came to Smith College. Smith does not charge for the parking spaces. The model for many years was Zip, and their competitors, there are a few competitors out there, would work for large cities at their own risk, and for small cities and universities, only if their business was guaranteed. They've changed the model, now they're reaching out to more, I don't want to say that we're a marginal market, but we're not as big a market as a big city. But so, but the issue is, the clear, the margin is much, much tighter in our market than it is in Boston, or New York, or Cambridge, or bigger markets. So the numbers just don't work yet. You know, over time, we expect that they're continued to go up. A Mass Perd just released a report saying that totaled vehicle miles traveled has dropped, I think, six percent. And that we, you know, this seems to be a long-term trend, many people are using shared car services, mass transit, and if that holds, the numbers are going to work more for these kinds of things. We're not quite there yet. Quite frankly, all cards on the table, the mayor will be negotiating this, but I believe they're probably going to pay some, willing to pay somewhere near about fifty or sixty dollars a month per parking space. So certainly less than, you know, the ninety dollars a month that we get for a parking pass. But remember, a parking pass, when you get it, is good for one family and one car. Zipcar serves fifteen families or twenty families. So if you look at sort of the total cost, the, the public subsidy, if you will, per Zipcar customer is far less than the public subsidy for, you know, other customers.
So I just want to follow up on that. So essentially, what we're trying to do is give the mayor some nego, I think most people want to have Zipcar here. I think most of us would rather that Zipcar paid not only for the space, but paid us more money, gave us some percentage. But the problem, what you're saying is, the problem is, we're still not quite at that place where they might not come. We had this experience a few years ago. We would like them to come. And so this is about saying, let the mayor negotiate a deal with them. A piece of that deal might be, at least, and this is just the, it could just be a one-year thing, might be, all right, in order to get you to come here and try this, because you don't want to come, we'll give you parking spaces at a reduced fee or even free. The second year, he could turn around and say, hey, it worked really well, you made a profit here, we're not going to do that again. So I think it's just, I think the desire to have them here is, is the main thing, and then we're saying, negotiate the best you can for the city.
Right, right. It is absolutely right. I mean, remember, there are multiple companies. So this won't be like a secret negotiation. You will know when the market is ripe, because instead of only one company wanting to come here, we have three companies. And when three companies want to go here, then the market's changed. So we're not there yet. I, whether it's one year or ten years, I think we're still not going to see...
In other words, after year one, if it were to happen, that Zipcar comes in, and they come in, they do really well, then year two, we have better negotiating, because we've got two other companies we could then go to.
That's correct.
Councillor Murphy?
Well, I was just going to point out that in ordinance, we adopted the recommendations that gave the mayor the authority, so...
Right.
Yeah, we, those are adopted in the final verdict.
So we're talking about adding two cars, but we're talking about six spaces. Is that just for ease of parking? If they're, if we're just having them bring in two cars initially, why do we need six spaces?
This is partially about leaving our options open for both them to grow and competitors to come. So Zipcar has told us they're only interested in, so Zipcar started at Smith College, whatever, six or seven years ago, with two cars, and Smith guaranteed it. It's now grown, Smith doesn't guarantee it, and there's now six cars on campus. So we'd like the flexibility to grow the program, whether it's with Zip, or Enterprise, or Hertz's equivalent, over time. So yes, we, because this is in essence to avoid the monopoly. We don't want them to say, oh, you only can do two, you gave it to us. We'd like to have a brace of him growing or somebody else.
So would they be giving us whatever the agreed lease amount on six spaces, or just on those two?
And they'd only have two spaces. So you'd be, you'd be given the mayor authority for six. On day one, it would be two, but, you know, if it grows. They tend to always do these cars in pairs, because you do one car, the car's not there, you might be frustrated. So they tend to grow in pairs, so two, four, six, you know.
Councillor Klein?
I want to actually address this kind of monopoly question, because with research that I did, as of July two thousand and twelve, there were twenty-six car-sharing programs in the United States. And so, you know, we're, we're focused here on Zipcar, and I'm wondering, you know, have we done adequate research to look at other car-share services, to see if in fact we can find one? Several of them are owned by, you know, large corporations, Hertz On Demand, Enterprise Rent-A-Car. And just trying to see if we can in fact find someone that will pay full value for those parking.
So there's three large services, the three that you mentioned. There's a host of smaller ones, Car2Go, I think is the one in Austin, which is very small, and I believe they're only in the Austin market. There were some other ones which actually merged together. But all of them, where, if you look at the markets they're in, all of them, or almost all of them, tend to be in larger markets. So Zip is unique in pushing the envelope for the smaller markets, and so most of them aren't interested in towns like us. And until recently, they all required free parking spaces. It's really only been as this market has proven itself in bigger cities, that they're beginning to willing to pay for, for parking spaces. So I, I'm a member of the Urban Sustainability Network, whatever it's called, it's a municipal network of sustainability directors, and there's a lot of discussion about car-share programs there, and what's the market that works? And it doesn't seem from those discussions that markets like us yet demand a premium price yet.
Councillor O'Donnell?
I have a question about the word renewable and renewable leases. Does that imply in any way that the, the terms of a lease for, say, the previous year could be automatically accepted again for the next year?
No.
It just means...
Means the mayor wouldn't have to come back to you to renew the leases.
And I ask that because one of the ideas that came up, and I think it was in EDLU, was in this order, we could in fact stipulate that we're giving that authority for a one-year period. Could do that. It would be limiting, I wouldn't want to overly limit the mayor, but I mean, it would be a way to ensure that we come back in here and say, hey, wait a minute, maybe we should be charging.
Two thoughts about that. One is, if you're going to limit it, you probably should limit it to three years, because most places don't want to come in without knowing they could be there that long. Even though both parties still have the right to cancel if it doesn't work for some reason. The other is totally symbolic. I know you all and trust you all, but not everybody does. And so I think the message you want to send is, you may want to revisit in terms of terms and those kinds of things, but not necessarily revisit, I mean, hopefully, we're committed to wanting car shares out, out there. And so I just want to be very careful of that message that's out there.
Wait, I feel like part of the reason to give them this opportunity is so that they can make sure that they're successful. But they already know they're successful. They're successful at Smith, already successful in Northampton. So I, I don't, I don't have any concern that they will be successful, and I still feel like this would be, this allows for the possibility of, of free parking to, to a company that, that sold for half a billion dollars last year. So I do kind of view it as a subsidy. I have no concerns that they'll be successful here. They actually are successful here already. And I want to clarify, because it's slightly confusing from reading the order. It says at no cost to the city, and with, but the users are paying. This isn't like some free service for residents. You have to, residents have to be part of the program and pay per use. And, and so it's not free, and, and this allows the mayor to put reasonable conditions on it, but it also allows for potentially free parking. I, I think that, I, I don't think they need to be in the parking garage at all, for one, we discussed this a little bit at, at EDLU. And also, when, when leaseholders are paying up to nine, they're paying somewhere between ninety dollars a month for, for the dedicated parking lot that's only for leaseholders. We've, we've given out a hundred of those passes. There are only seventy spots. So users have to use the rest of the garage if and when it's available, and sometimes there's no availability whatsoever. So to create a possibility where a half-billion-dollar mega corporation could have free spots in the garage that other people can't use, that these might not be used all the time. They, they, they may be sitting there just taking up spots that another person could use. I just, I can't really see it as fair. I think maybe we should consider limiting it to outdoors, mandating that they pay, and I don't understand why we don't put this out to bid. The order states Zipcar. The ordinance does not state any particular company. Why don't we put this out to bid and ensure that we're getting paid? And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm, I would feel more comfortable with the mayor here, maybe he'll give us some assurances that, 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 for one, maybe he would be open-minded considering that they don't need, they don't need dedicated covered parking with those. They're not even used all the time necessarily. They could be sitting unused for a period of time. And maybe he'll give us some sort of assurances that, that they certainly will have to pay. But, I mean, why don't we, why don't we have them bid? And, and again, I just don't see it as fair if you're paying ninety dollars a month. I used to have, I had a pass there for twelve years, I no longer do. But there were times where I was paying ninety dollars a month, I didn't get a spot in the entire garage, and I had to pay for, for on-street parking. And, and so we also have a, a list, so, a, a list of people who want to get that pass that's long enough to fill the entire garage. So, you know, I, I, I don't think it's fair to give, to, to create the possibility that this mega corporation that got sold... mega corporation that got sold for a half-billion dollars last year should have free access to our parking garage.
Counselor Specter.
So I guess this brings up the issue, because we've had these kind of discussions before when there are contracts that the mayor is going to negotiate, whether it's with Smith College or other places. And I basically take the stand of, you don't, I don't want to be negotiating a contract, the nine of us. What we're basically saying is, we're empowering the mayor to do what's best for the city in a contract negotiation. We can decide, okay, we can put all kinds of limitations on this. And again, I think it's, do we have a desire to have this happen, even if it's for a year? If the contract is really terrible, we can come back and revisit this. But it's the desire to have this, and I guess it's a question of, do we trust that the statements even that Wayne's making and the research on this is that, you know, these companies are not knocking down our door to do this? If they were, we'd have companies coming. If this looked like a good market, what would happen is, we would have a lot of companies wanting to be here. We have rental companies here, you know, we have Enterprise, and we have these other companies. We only have a, you know, small number, they're not 20 or 30. We don't have a lot of these share companies, car-share companies coming in here. I think in this first year, what I would like to see is, let's let the mayor negotiate this in the best way, because I think from what I've heard, most people want this to happen. If we look at this after the first year, and we say this was not a, something we, we think was a good deal, we can come back and, and look at this again. But I would like to see this take place. And again, look at what they're doing. They're coming in here with initially two cars. So it's not, it's not a big operation we're talking about.
Counselor CR.
Wayne, is there, is there an inherent advantage to using Zipcar versus putting out to bid or trying to find another company? Because Smith already uses Zipcar, can, are those cars somewhat going to be, this six there and the two here, somewhat interchangeable, so it's now a team of eight cars?
That's exactly right. What you'd like to have in ideal world is a network.
Fleet.
You'd like ideally a network where each car is maybe 500 feet away from the next car. So I'm a member of Zipcar, and so I typically get my car from the parking garage. And so far, there've always been cars there. But if I couldn't, I could then go to the next site on campus for cars.
Could we park, like, a car, one of our city cars, could they be parked at Smith?
So your membership would be, so you have, you have a membership card, you can now get an app for your iPhone, or, you know, whatever your phone is, and I can be saying, oh, I suddenly feel like going to Detroit tomorrow. And I can, you know, sign up quickly and, and get a car. And if the cars are going downtown, I can use them there, as opposed to having to be members of different groups. So there, there's certainly benefits for doing that. That said, if both, you know, if Zip and Enterprise want to come in town, the whole reason for asking for six spots is, we could potentially accommodate both of them and left them. Because, you know, on the one hand, Zip is more mature, and so it's going to meet more needs. On the other hand, of course, we want competition, so we want Enterprise to get a chance to come, we want Hertz to get a chance to come.
Counselor LaBarge.
My question is, in economic development, housing and land use, Counselor Specter, was the mayor there and talked about it then?
No, wait, I'm sorry. Wait.
Didn't he come in? I thought he came in briefly.
He, he was present for the round discussion.
I thought he weighed in briefly on it, too, but maybe, maybe I missed remembering.
Counselor O'Donnell.
I, I think the trick of this is, this is a private company that's providing a public benefit. It's sort of like a cab company in a way, except you, you drive your own vehicle, you know, driven around. I sort of feel those things are comparable. So my question is, when we give licenses to, like, last month, we gave a pedicab license out, I think, for one of the first times. How long a period do we give that license out? I mean, did the city council stipulate, okay, you have this license for this amount of time? Because maybe that's not unreasonable to do for Zipcar.
On that point, I think it's different, because they're allowed to, they don't need to be, they don't need to take up a spot necessarily. But to the point that it's similar to a cab, if I were a cab company, I would think this is extremely unfair, because, you know, Funky Cab or whatever other cab doesn't have this opportunity. They're, they're totally excluded from the definition of this, and they do provide a similar public benefit, as Counselor O'Donnell pointed out. And they employ local people. And this Zipcar is going to, it's not going to employ anybody, or maybe, you know, one or two people to come move the car occasionally, at least that's what this was discussed in EDLO. So, you know, this is not something that employs people, unlike taxi cab companies. And, and when you can make that comparison, I think it makes, I think it's, we see that this is unfair.
Counselor Carney.
Okay, thanks. I'd just like to bring it back to what the order is. And the order is whether we want to authorize the mayor to sign renewable leases. And again, as Counselor Specter said, so where, whether we want to defer to the mayor's judgment in these, in negotiating those leases, it doesn't say with Zipcar. It does say, and so, and the mayor isn't here tonight to ask those questions that a lot of us have asked. Now, we could either table this, or we could pass it in first reading, and then with the request that the mayor certainly be present to answer those questions in second reading. I think, but those are our options. If we defeat it, it's gone, and the mayor will no longer have an authority at all to negotiate a lease around shared vehicles. And it sounds like this is something, at least, that has been in the works for, for as long as I, I can remember this, going back at least six years when Zipcar was first coming to the city. So, and again, I just said Zipcar, but we brought, there's no mention of Zipcar in the, in the order itself. And those are some very important questions that we would ask the mayor, in terms of what kind of market research, what kind of, you know, and whether we want to allow the mayor to actually engage in that, in that work or not.
Just point of clarification, Zipcar is mentioned in the order, but not the ordinance.
Order?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge, Counselor Klein.
Right. I like the idea with Counselor Specter and Counselor Carney, in regards to, yes, the mayor is not here, but I think that we should do first reading, ask the mayor to be here so that we can go ahead and bring forth the concerns that we have about the ordinance.
Counselor Klein.
I'm just wondering if there's any detriment to amending the language a little bit to emphasize the priority for not offering the free spaces to this company that was just purchased for half a million dollars.
We did change it in ordinance, the free is gone.
Right.
The amended, the amended language is here that says, may lease, free is striked, is stricken. I don't know if we're seeing this in...
Can I, I mean, can I, I can make a suggestion that, that for consideration, that the mayor finds reasonable. That way, it's mandated to be something, but he can determine what that is. But, I mean, because with this language, he can determine free to be reasonable for a period of time.
Free's gone in the language, just so we know.
What I'm saying is, finds reasonable, he could determine free is reasonable for periods. And because it requires that he, that it, terms and conditions that he finds reasonable.
Are you making that as a amendment? Because I would second that, because I think what that, basically, in the spirit of this to saying, we authorize the mayor to negotiate.
Okay. I'll...
Are you looking at the language that already has the strike through in it? Because we amended this in ordinance. Is that, is that, does that strike through already in it?
This, I believe it's the...
You can see if it has the strike through in it. No, it, no, it doesn't. Is authorized to sign. Oh, I see, and ours has it. Yep, okay, so you could amend that further, where, yep.
Yeah, okay, I'll move, and other terms and conditions for consideration as the mayor finds reasonable. Second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I, I don't understand the distinction.
Because the, the way it is now, it's simply that, that, for whatever the mayor determines to be reasonable, he could put as a condition.
Okay.
Given this language, the mayor could determine that free is reasonable, given the particular situation.
The counsel, how is that different from what it is now?
Right.
When I, when we add consideration, that means that there must be payment. Payment that he considers reasonable. That's what I'm trying, that's what intended is.
That's what you mean by consideration.
Right, like, yeah, contractual.
So a dollar could be reasonable.
Okay.
But zero is not, so zero is taken out of the equation.
What consideration would, zero...
I'm just looking.
Could be a dollar.
Right, right.
Okay.
But right now, it does allow, it allows for, it allows for zero ad infinitum, and what you're saying would allow for $1 ad infinitum. So I don't really see the difference in that, if it's either zero or to whatever high amount or one. It seems, it doesn't add all that much to...
And we have other options.
Just to do the whole, I would actually rather wait for the, to hear, I'd rather table it actually and hear from, if there's going to be that much, if there's that much discomfort around this, I'd rather table it and talk to the mayor.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion.
Sure.
Is there, is there further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is there any problem with table, with tabling? Is there any time pressure on this?
Only in that there are benefits of getting this in place by the summer, when we get more visitors down, we'd like to do that.
So I would like to, this, again, I go back to the second reading, in that this is why we have it. Questions come up, I think the mayor comes, if he doesn't satisfy that, we vote this down, you know? We change it, or amend it then. So I'd be happy to move this, I would support moving this forward.
Counselor O'Donnell. I, I guess my preference would also be to pass it, or consider it now for first reading, rather than table it, because then we still get a breather, but yet we move it forward.
Just a question about the language here. So looking at the ordinance, it says, the mayor may lease parking spaces and associated signage. So lease doesn't necessarily mean that there would be some cost associated with it, because free has been struck?
Yeah, we asked, we asked this of Carolyn when she came to the ordinance committee, and it was her, her opinion, she's not the city solicitor, obviously, but her opinion was that the language, as amended, would allow the mayor to lease for zero, or for one or two ad infinitum. And that that's what this language allowed, for any, any figure that the mayor deemed appropriate in the negotiations.
So this language doesn't really change anything, even though it's struck, authorized free?
Yes, because originally, I think, I think it, yes, it doesn't, what it does is, it says, it allows open the possibility that it would be free or for money, when I think originally, the discussion was that it would automatically be free. But then there was enough concern that was raised either in EDLO, I think that's where the concerns were raised, that, and it was probably you, Counselor Klein, I'm not really sure, but there's enough concern that the, the language was amended such that it wouldn't, it wouldn't specifically say free, but instead would say lease, and then it would be up to the mayor, whether that would be for free or for remuneration.
Mr. Fiden.
I have spoken to the mayor about this. He's absolutely intending not to be free to charge something for it. I think that something is still what he's exploring in a negotiation, and he threw out the $50 or $60 a month per space as what we believe the market is. So I wouldn't hold him to that, but that, that's still, you know, $100 a month times 12 months is money, it's not huge amounts. So I'm sure he's trying, I'm sure he's committed to, you're for consideration or something like that would have been fine from his standpoint.
Counselor LaBarge.
Second.
Motion's made in second to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Sarah.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Klein. Sorry.
Pass it on first reading. If there aren't any objections, I'll take orders five, six, and seven, which are all related to parking, as a group to refer to the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Are there any updates from committee chairs?
Oh.
Skip the order, skip the ordinance, sorry.
Thank you.
So I skipped the ordinance, that we just discussed the order, but we kind of encompassed both. But ordinance number, number four, ordinance, amend section 312-36 Parking Peter Locations and Regulations, Private Shared Vehicle Services. Is there a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Is there further discussion on this?
Just to, just to point out, does the record say that we want very much the mayor